Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the board please?
Yes, Mrs. Taddean.
Here.
Mr. Gabyanni.
Here.
Mr. Masterson.
Here.
Mr. Paulson.
Here.
Mrs. Swanson.
Here.
Mr. Broman.
Here.
Mrs. Inteher.
Here.
Mrs. Taddean, will you let us into the conference room?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any modifications to the agenda that board members wish to make? Okay, then our first agenda item is public comments. And we have three people sign up for public comments tonight. Hold on please while I get to my statement. Yes, I'm trying to get the mouse to me there, but it's not moving. Okay, there you go. The Board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting, so please be respectful for the duties of the Board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name and address, address your comments to the Board, and limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the Board or staff. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the Board's chance to chat or present your comments to us in writing.
Yes, my name is Mary Ann Matone. I live in Wheaton. Listed on the agenda this evening is a presentation by a PR firm, Unicom, in regards to the Jefferson preschool referendum, which was voted down by the community last spring. This potential hiring of the PR firm raises questions, in my opinion, and some concerns. Why is the district willing to spend money that we don't have on a PR firm when we have a paid public relations director who has an assistant? Isn't that their job? If not, what are we paying the salary and benefits for? Why is a government entity with elected board members hiring a PR firm? You have no competitors, you are not selling a product. Why should you use harder-to-taxpayer money to hire a PR firm? If you are doing your job as board members, you shouldn't need to hire someone to do the work you are supposed to do. It is your job as board members in a district to engage the community. You don't need to hire a firm to hold town hall meetings and get feedback. You can do that on your own, and you should. This Board heard from the public last year. The public was calling the Board out, or the district on some misinformation, the numbers and the cost. People were upset about the $13 million windfall. The public felt the proposal was too big and too much money. Some feel that was what was the case with Hubble. What was paid for Hubble could have probably gone to a middle school and a preschool. So instead of going back in good faith and putting forth an effort to scale the proposal back, check to see if we can retrofit what's existing, dig deep into your pockets to find extra dollars, or come up with a financial strategy to ease the burden on the taxpayers, come back to us and say we hurt you and we are respecting your wishes. You want to hire a PR firm to make something unpalatable palatable. It seems like the Board only wants community input when you want more of our money. And it seems like many times you only want input from those who agree with you. There are many times, you sometimes use your bully pulpit, when taxpayers question you, challenge you, or aren't telling you that everything is hunky-dory. Many times the speaker is up here, and when the speaker sits down, we hear that we are not telling the truth, we're being misinformed, and the individual has no recourse to reply back to you because the format of these public meetings are stacked against the taxpayers. This Board should rise to the challenge and handle their own community engagement, and stop spending our money on a PR firm. Please be people of integrity and respect everybody in the community, which has not always been the fact. Please stop demonizing and character-assassinating those who don't agree with you. In other words, please be leaders. Vote no on a PR firm, listen to the community, and do the right thing. Thank you.
Jan Shaw? Please state your address.
What?
I need you to please state your address and then just...
Oh, it's Jan Shaw, 2265 Durham, Wheaton, Illinois. Okay, I wanted to talk, I noticed the PR firm also. I did run for school board last year, as you all know. One of the things that people have asked me since then is, when is the school district going to come back and tell us, now that we saw in the Daily Herald that they're going to put Jefferson on the ballot again? When are we going to find out what they're actually proposing? When are they going to hold an open meeting, when the community can come ask questions, get feedback, and actually hold a dialogue? People want to be able to talk back and forth, not talk at you and not have you talk at them. These meetings here, it's kind of crazy. The first school board member meeting, everyone who was close to 20 years ago, at that one, they had public comment, the school board met for a bit, and we took a break and had coffee, and the school board members actually came out and chatted with the folks in the audience. And then we sat back down and they talked a little more and voted. Somewhere along the line, the whole thing changed. It's not three minutes, it's very stiff, we have no chance to actually talk and dialogue. The community wants to dialogue with their members of the school board, and we do want to know what the new plan is for Jefferson.
Pam Nielsen, 27W 685 Parkview Avenue, Lawrenceville, Illinois. Hi. Most of you know me, Dr. Harris, and a few of the new board members who were not around from our previous board speeches. You need to know that my heart is in the right place. I'm not up here for any personal agenda to deceive or to delay. The last cause I fought for was in the millions of dollars. I don't want near that much money now. I'm not, also, the last time I had a cause, and the first time I ever spoke at a board meeting, I did not know how many parents felt the same way I did. This is different tonight. I know that there is a huge group of parents behind this cause. We are all in support of bringing the B teams back to the middle schools. Back in 2010, we, the parents and students, rallied around you, the school district, when you had to do your job and cut many of our programs. The school board told us at that meeting they would come back as soon as they thought possible to bring some of our programs back. Well, we believe the time is now. We all have a list of reasons on why the B team should be in the school system. It's important to be on a team, you know, 20 years from now at a class reunion, you're not yucking up how fun math class was, it was how you made that last point in your basketball team or volleyball score. Purpose to be in school, it may be the only reason a kid gets out of bed that day. He purchased space in that sport, tries out for another, makes new friends, gains confidence. To stay on a team, you have to have good grades and good conduct. Coaches are very influential. My husband Jeff played all the way through college, now he's a physician, and he still quotes his coaches to L.A. spaceship. Exercise is important. In fact, the whole district just cut out birthdays next, so we know how important this is. It's also an unfair advantage to wealthier parents. Not all can afford travel teams. Currently, within our conference, we are also affecting other schools as their B teams do not get to play when they play our schools. Worst of all, we're losing our conference. We are out next year, so now we've affected our A team as well. So having said all that, I personally don't think we need to convince you or any of you that participating in a school sport team is important and extremely rewarding. I think we're all on the same page. We respectfully believe that the money is there and can be found. This is what I need to convince you all of. There's a lot of rumors going around from parents that we're talking about bringing a lacrosse team to the high school now that it's an IAS/HA-approved sport. Great, I'm all for more activities for our students. But, and I think you all know where I'm going on this one, before we add something new that will take a lot of budgeted money, especially a startup sport like that, we should look to see what we need to bring back, as we promised, in our other schools. Our school district is way too large and too affluent to be the only ones around us in our conference not to have a B team in the middle schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everybody. Now we will have the superintendents report. Dr. Harris?
Thank you, Mrs. Inteher. Good evening, board members, community. Just a couple brief items this evening. It's only been a couple weeks since our last meeting, so I was able to update on several things going on, but this evening, just a couple quick things. First of all, last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, Mr. Mack and I had the opportunity to attend the CIO Technology Leadership Summit, where a group of approximately 80 district leaders from across the country meet and talk about how to invest, incorporate technology into the classrooms, and how to have positive impact on student learning. I can tell you, it was a very factual, innovative time and discussion. The conference was sponsored in behalf by Google and HP, obviously two vendors that have a large stake in what goes on in all public schools. We actually had a conversation with the tech director from LA Public Schools, where he just purchased about 800,000 iPads that he was planning on deploying in the next two weeks. So that was an interesting conversation. We also were talking with staff from suburban Boston and some of the challenges that they're having. One of, a couple things that came out of this great discussion and learning opportunity that we had was that there's multiple models for innovation. There's multiple ways to integrate technology into the classroom and use it to help students learn. There is no one way. That clearly was the message, it was clearly a theme that was talked about. And certainly one of the things that we continue to look toward as we want to move forward here in the classrooms in our district. Also, we had many discussions about curriculum and the 21st century learning situation. What set of skills do kids need? A lot of discussion how to integrate curriculum and how to use those tools and pick the right tools in the right situations. It's a mode to get to where you want to be, to the main, so we're going to be talking about that here this evening with our student achievement and how we can get better at that. And finally, one of the most useful things, the last session of the conference, was we created our own utopia, which was, actually, I was at the superintendent table, and I believe Rod was at a different table.
I was at the finance table.
Finance table, there you go. And we basically talked about if we were given, you know, without any barriers over the next five years, what would it look like? What would, you know, things look like in a model classroom and how we... And so it was really a dreaming session, based on all the things that we had talked about over the last day and a half. So it was very inspiring, very, a lot of thought-provoking opportunities and ideas, and I do believe we're going to be pursuing those here in the very near future, over the next several months and next couple of years. So we'll be bringing some of those ideas forward in the very near future, so I wanted to share that opportunity we had. And certainly it was well worth our time to spend there, and having those dialogues with some of the other districts across the country. Second update that I have is, I wanted to let the Board know that we had our first meeting last, superintendent's committee last night, on the Enrollment Advisory Committee. That was a new committee that I was asked to find a solution to how we can continually advise and update the Board on enrollment as it pertains to capacity and so on. And they had their first meeting last night. It's a committee that is being chaired by Bill Farley and Erica Loakino. It's a combination of staff and parents and community members. And they're taking a look at, excuse me, building space needs, you know, basically looking at our capacities of all of our facilities, also looking at the CRISADA projections that we updated the Board on last spring, as well as our current enrollment. Basically, what's happened here after the first few weeks of school, what's it looking like in all of our buildings? And they had their first meeting last night. There's certainly going to be staffing implications in the future for our planning. We're good right now, but we want to make sure that we're prepared and make decisions accordingly down the road. So this committee is taking a look at all of those options, and they have a second meeting scheduled in October, and they're going to be taking a little more detail into some of this, the scheduling and special education programming and impacts, some of those issues that I just mentioned, as well as review and compile recommendations. So I do anticipate that committee having a report for the Board in November. I just wanted to update the Board on that. That was one of those targets that, a little bit of a carryover from last year as we were looking for ways to how to review all the different pieces of data we have and talk about, you know, where we're headed and make sure we do some strategic decision-making and planning with our facilities as we move forward. So wanted to just make sure the Board is aware that that committee started last night, and will be working over the next month and a half and have a report to where we sit and where we may be headed to the future. Unless there's any questions, that concludes superintendent's report.
Ms. Masterson?
I have a couple questions. Just the, we mentioned that we'll be pursuing the technology matter there. I'm just trying to, do we have kind of a timetable on that at all, or as we'll be, you know, approaching them in more detail?
You know, one thing I learned from those two days with that group of individuals was that this is an ongoing thing. I mean, we're certainly going to continue to bring certain recommendations forward as, A, we can afford it, B, that we professionally can provide professional development for staff, and, C, be able to have the equipment to make it happen. So it's really a combination of things. Some of those were ideas, as I said. We certainly have to operationalize them and make sure that we've got the resources in place. I believe you'll see pieces of that in the very near future. We certainly will have, you know, some planning tools and updates on that, you know, as we move forward. We are implementing several of those strategies this year with this budget that I assume the Board will be approving this evening, and certainly continue to move forward. You're never, one thing I heard over and over, you never have arrived in that arena because things change so quickly, and the opportunities and the softwares and the devices change so rapidly. That was a constant theme. So I think trying to make some strategic decisions, and then in a year and a half, things change. So you have to try and be very careful on how you move forward before just, you know, taking, you know, an unplanned approach, and that's very, very important.
Yeah, I think that what I'm looking for there again is that I want to make sure that we have sufficient time before the next budget process. Here's now, that we'll be discussing that at the Board level and addressing that. The other question I have on the Enrollment Advisory Committee, does that principally stay out, or I didn't hear who was a member of that?
It's a combination. It's a combination of staff, and then we have some, a couple principals involved, as well as several community members, several parents. We have a teachers' association member as well as several community members, a variety of stuff. I don't have the names right here in front of me. I remember exactly who they are. Do you have the list there? We have several parents and community members in law. Do you remember off the top you had who they all are?
Do I have names?
Well, how many are there?
How many are there? Six?
Oh, no. We've got probably about 12 people.
But six community members, correct?
Including parents? Yeah, that sounds about right.
As well as six staff. So it's about 12 to 15 individuals.
Are those meetings open to the public? I mean, I, no, they're not.
No, that's a superintendent committee. I mean, basically, it's a planning advisory type of role.
Are there any other questions on the superintendent's report? Thank you, Dr. Harris. We have one H item tonight, and that is to adopt the 2013-2014 Community Unit School District 200 budget. Is there any staff, anything staff wishes to say about this?
Just, I want to have Mr. Farley just briefly summarize. We've had many discussions about this, and certainly if there's any comments from the finance committee, we might have those as well, but I'll let Mr. Farley summarize the final budget.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Tonight is the final step in the budget process. The budget was supposed to be done in July of 2013. A public hearing was held on the budget at the last Board of Education meeting, as well as we updated the Board of Education on the change in the estimate on the CPPRT and subsequent expenditures that were going to follow that increase on that revenue side. All that information was subsequently shared with the finance committee at the last meeting we had. I'll save it for Mrs. Swanson and Mr. Masterson to go over. The last piece, as was also mentioned at the last Board of Education meeting, we did include in this budget document the on-behalf payment by the State of Illinois for the TRS compensation, which we had previously included in there, and will include that moving forward.
Any comments from either Jim or Rosemary?
Yeah, I think we both will chime in here a little bit, but I'd just give you kind of an overview. We met, as has been mentioned, on September 17th for well over two hours. It was a, it was a very useful and robust meeting, I would characterize it. Basically, we had three topics. There was some discussion on two items that are aimed at improving our overall Board oversight of finances. One is the value of a subcommittee of finance professionals from our community, just basically to give some additional oversight as to our financial position. And then, secondly, some tweaking of Board financial reports as they come to us to help us maybe understand them and interpret them a little bit better. But both of those topics will really be continued at our next Finance Committee meeting. Really, the bulk of the meeting was about the budget, I would say. And there were some questions on line items that were answered, you know, and reconciled very quickly. But really, most of the time was spent on sort of a big-picture perspective, especially of how the money from the CPPRT and the unneeded pension shift money that had been previously sort of assumed we might need, where that money was allocated. And in the context of that, we did in fact talk a little bit about the 2010-2011 cuts as to when and where those things might come back into a budget, very briefly on that. And then we taught more extensively on tech expenditures, because I think you'll see that that was the bulk of the additional money that is put toward that. And just to emphasize that the money that we're talking about having sort of additional this year, I know at the last board meeting I was talking about how good it was to feel like we have some choices, but I do have to emphasize that that money is really the result of kind of found money. It's pension shift that for this year we don't have to worry about, but we don't know in coming years whether or not we'll have to do that. And of course, the CPPRT, which gave us a little bit, quite a bit more than we anticipated, but again, as we heard from Mr. Farley last time, that's not something we can rely upon. So we're not talking about new or increased reliable revenue sources, so I, or streams, so I think that's just something to take into context. But in terms of the tech, we did talk a bit about how tech expenditures can be better tracked within the budget. You know, if you look in the budgets, you can't really suss out the tech expenditures all that easily in there. So we talked about ways that that could be tracked, really with an eye to then matching that up with our progress in that area later, so that we can see how the budget allocations are facilitating our technology program going forward. And then, of course, there was the usual discussion about pensions. We had to, we had to talk about that, and as I mentioned, the caution that we still will need going forward to plan on putting it in for, you know, future years until we hear otherwise. And Jim, I think maybe you've got some more details to fill in. That was kind of an overview.
Yeah, a number of items that we're talking about. Let's talk about that pension item first. I think back in March, I believe it was, when we did some, you know, tentative planning for this year's budget, that there was an attempt to put about $400,000 into the pension program because of the unknowns. Well, the State of Illinois is yet to make a conclusion on how and that area will be addressed. And accordingly, this budget contains no anticipated costs in the current year for the pension funding. And again, you know, back in March, you know, the guidelines were it could be a percent of the total payments that the state currently pays on behalf of the teacher's retirement program, and that was speculated at that time to be this $400,000 or $500,000. Well, we have no better knowledge now, but more significantly, we have not consumed that or included that in the budget. The other issue we talked about was tech dollars. Again, you know, we're looking to get a better breakout on that information. I think, again, if we went back and looked at our plans from a year ago or six months ago, whatever, we're still not to the level we want to be at, and we're still, you know, we still need to find dollars to do the technology program, and, you know, to enhance the technology program. This goes right in the teeth of the B team and everything else. You know, we have to make choices, and, you know, at this point, we don't have enough to do that, but I would surely be interested in trying to address that issue, the B team, et cetera. I know there's a lot of public communication going on in that area, and again, I don't think, there's nothing we can clearly do now, but I think between now and next year again, as we look at the budget, we want to be looking at the opportunity to do that. I think it's a great program for kids, we just have to figure out how to pay for it. And I think we need to make that decision. Other items, you know, again, I hear, and we've talked about this, finance committee. Part of that finance committee will involve community members, and, you know, part of that, again, will be to try and explain what I call is a very complicated set of financial information. I fortunately have dealt with that for a long time in my life, so it did, it's something that, you know, I believe I can help explain a bit. But more significantly, you know, we've talked about things in the past, whether it be the 13, $15 million windfall. That's part of our fund balance, and we have a policy at the district that basically says for sound financial footing, if you want to call it that, we need to maintain fund balance. And that fund balance, that 13, $15 million really put us in shape that we could do that, so that we don't have to borrow and pay interest, you know, on tax warrants that would affect the, even erode into the budget process and remove costs of what may be a B team, or technology, or teachers, or whatever. So I think it's very important we understand that that base of dollars is very necessary just to operate the business. And, you know, again, I think, you know, as we move forward on this finance committee, my pledge to the community is that we get input from the community. It's not going to be a rubber stamp committee. You know, we want that input so that we can react to it, and I will devote my role in doing that the best I can. So I think are the highlights of the two hour, and you don't even have to identify who was probably responsible for the extra hour and a half, but, you know, we're going to watch that closely, so thank you.
I think we could all guess, but it's, thank you, Mr. Nielsen. Are there any other comments, Mr. Paulson?
Yeah, I had a chance to go through the budget again in great detail, which was my second time totally going through the budget. I feel comfortable with everything. Thank you, Dr. Harris, for the specific questions on some of the special education tuition issues. And I'm just curious, what's next? What do we have, what do we not have in this budget that we want to keep our eye on? You know, we're all interested in technology. I just read an article today about a school district in the area of Page County. It's got all this technology invested in it, you don't know what to do with it, it's not connected to curriculum, it's a big problem. I'm just curious, you know, what's our next issue that we need to be focused on that we want to try to incorporate in future budgets? So, you know, I understand the B team sports. I live with one of those students that would be playing on the B team. If I wasn't here, I might be one of the authors of those emails. So in addition to those issues, which could come up through the community engagement process, we'll talk about later, so what do we need to keep on our eye on over the next year related to student achievement for all students that we want to keep talking about?
Sure. Just, you know, a couple of quick things come to my mind, and certainly, you know, there was a lot of planning went into this budget as it's presented. However, moving forward, I think there's really two main areas. One is the number one factor in student achievement, which we're going to hear about this evening, is the professional development of staff. Okay? We can talk about the tools, but if the staff don't know how to use them, and they aren't able to incorporate in the classroom, then we're wasting our time and effort. So the, that professional development piece, how to incorporate, how to make decisions on picking the right tools and making it happen in the classroom, getting them in the hands of kids, is so they can learn at a high level, that is very, very critical. And it's complex. There's, the other second thing is, we do have to take a look at what was cut out of the budget four years ago. And a piece of that, it was a lot of professional development. It was nearly $7 million a year. You know, a small portion of it was the student activities at the middle school level that was addressed here this evening, and a very critical piece. Nobody's arguing that that programming is not important, nobody. However, it's all about decisions, and we have to be able to look at what was taken out. And one of the biggest chunks of money that was reduced in that budget was professional development dollars and directly related to curriculum leaders at every building across the district, reading teachers at the high school level. Those were what were removed from the budget at that time. It was a significant amount of FTE. And so, it's a great question, it's certainly on the plate, we have to take a hard look at that and start to reincorporate. But, you know, we're four years down the road, there's new challenges, new opportunities, new things that are in front of us, and we may want to take a different approach as we start to reincorporate and reallocate some of those things. I think that's where that planning goes into it as we look forward. So that's my quick response. I mean, certainly that's, there's a lot of detail behind that, but that's my initial
Undelighted with the work, the report that I've heard from the members of the finance committee. I'm so thankful that you're looking at the budget and finding ways in which, in fact, how our expenditures on tech matched with our plans. One of the other issues that I think we need to keep our eye on is our facilities. As a former member of the facilities... As a former member of the facilities day and the review and performance contracts and so forth, I reach, I have a great appreciation for the needs of our facilities. There's a lot on the plate, which leads me to the next point, that we hope through the community engagement process that we're going to be talking about a little bit later and initiated here, we'll learn a lot more of what the community has as a priority. We know that B Team sports is a high priority among a certain segment of the community. Certainly have heard that over the last three or four days. But we want, we hope community engagement process that we're about to enter is to get a deep understanding of what the broad community wants, that may help us prioritize what we need to prioritize. And that's important. And that's why I'm so excited about this community engagement process that we're about to kick off here. So again, I applaud the chairman and Jim for what they've done and the entire finance committee and bill for what they've done to get this budget in place. But our work is just pretty much 20 years around there.
One final comment I have is, and I think Mr. Farley said it, but I'll say it again, you know, this is the fourth year in a row we've got a balanced budget moving forward and even ever so slightly with a little bit of increase in the fund balance. So we'll see what happens in the end, but, you know, that is the planned document that's in front of you this evening.
I just wanted to say something a little further about this year's budget and B Team sports. And I know you said, you know, it's become apparent in the last three, four days that it's important. But, you know, it is true that when we made those cuts three years ago, we did say we would come back and look at them when means allowed and determine whether or not it made sense to, you know, include some things back in the budget. And since that time, there have been a few of those cuts that over the years, not just in the past three or four days, but in the past three or four years, has really kind of continually come up. And B Teams is one of those. It's not the only one. Professional develops another one, a couple of other curricular items, but it has consistently come up. And so kind of bridging into the other topic we have tonight, it really is my hope that the community engagement process, it's really this year, I do support not addressing the B Teams this year. I don't think we are in the financial position this year to commit to that right at the present moment. But I do hope that the community engagement process would allow us to address head on some of those issues, maybe even a broader look at some of those cuts so that in the future, we could look at those and say, you know what, these can just be taken off the table. That's no longer a priority for our community. These are some that we have to commit to find a way to bring back so that by the time of Nets budget year, we would have a better understanding of where that is. And so I supported the cut when it took place. I supported the cuts, you know, now and through this year because I really think our best year money this year needs to go to technology to get us kind of even there. But if there, if it finds that the community has this still as a priority, I would support putting it back in in Nets budget year. So just kind of, you know, putting that out there and hoping that that engagement process will allow us to do that in the future.
Mrs. Coghill, Mr. Gambiani?
Are we bringing up B Team sports? Is that, it's not in the budget, so?
No, we shouldn't need to get off that topic. Get off. Well, I mean, the reason, in my view, the reason why we didn't put things back in that are recurring things is because the money that we received is not recurring money. So we can use the money on a one-time technology expenditure. We're using a little bit of it to hire one person, but certainly because we're thinking, well, some of that money will be recurring. But in general, this money is not planned on, it's not necessarily recurring money. So you would hate to reinstate programs one year and then not have the money for them the next. So I think we need to look at where we're getting the money, whether or not it's a stable source of revenue before we can talk about bringing back programs that will need to sustain year after year after year. It only makes sense to do it that way. So with that, we'll move on because obviously in this year's budget, there's none of that, none of that to be added in. But in addition, in conjunction with the finance committee and the community engagement committee, the learning and teaching community has reviewed from a programmatic perspective all the cuts and we'll be getting in depth in those reviews as we go on because the only reason that the budget and finance and facilities committee exists is so we can teach our kids what we need to teach them. So it's all, it's all program driven and we want that kind of to be the place where we say, okay, based on what the community has told us, here's the programming that ought to really happen and here's how, you know, we plan to do that. So it's a little more complicated than just saying, okay, they got, you know, $100,000, let's go ahead and bring back these schools. Anyway, any other comments on the budget?
Well, you're going to shoot me, but I just, I'm dying to know one thing that was said. Do A teams get to play the other schools or because we don't? Okay.
Yes, we have full schedules for those teams. Now, what the, you know, the issue is that is out there is when we travel to the other schools that we play, you know, the other schools are frustrated because we don't have two levels. We only have one level. And that is, I'm very aware of that issue and it is a concern. And that's, that's one of the, you know, downsides of not having that because the other schools have a lot of, they want to have the opportunities for the kids. And it's, you know, that is part of the issue there, no doubt about it.
I just had one, one thing I wanted to say before we get to a vote on the budget. And that is, it's my understanding that this budget presupposes an increase in the tax levy that that would be at the CPI. And the levy will be increased higher than the CPI to capture any new growth. So that is, when you're voting for this budget, you're essentially voting to make that kind of a levy. And I wanted to kind of tie that all together because sometimes we tend to separate those two things. And the only way this budget will work is if our revenues increase by the CPI that we're allowed to levy at. So with that, I'll take a motion to approve the budget.
Salute. And by Mrs. Swanson?
Second.
Second, then Mr. Roman. Is there any more discussion? Okay, Mrs. Hodgson, would you please call it?
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Coghill?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
No.
Mrs. Intar?
Yes. Motion yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Very good.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the community engagement proposal. Dr. Harris?
Yes, we do have two items this evening for discussion. The first one here this evening is a community engagement proposal. As the board is aware, we have a working board committee, the community engagement committee, that has already met twice and have laid out some expectations on how we can move forward in seeking the community's input on our educational programs, our operations, and our facilities. So therefore, we have met, we did spend some time with two different vendors that provided the information to us in the committee, Mr. Paulson and Mr. Roman and staff. Invited this evening, we have Unicom here this evening, to share with the entire board the details of how they would recommend that we move forward and engage the community in discussions about how we can strategically make decisions in the future and move forward in future budgets and in future programming. So any other comments before we introduce our guest, Mr. Roman or Mr. Paulson? Anything you want to add prior to this?
I'm going to say my comments.
Okay, fine. Okay, very good. Well, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Dan Burns, who is representing from Unicom. He is here this evening to explain the proposal that we heard at the committee level and for the board to understand what's involved, how the process will work. And also, you not only have a copy of the actual written proposal in your green folders, I also have copies of his PowerPoint presentation passed around here. I think you had a preview copy and said, this is the final one here. I don't think there's any changes to my knowledge, but just want to make sure that everybody does have a current copy of the actual PowerPoint. Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Harris and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to come and visit with you, share an abbreviated version, really, of what Dr. Rod Wright shared with your committee some days ago. So I'll try to move through this in an efficient kind of way, but I did want to say thank you for the opportunity to come and share. Just a little bit about our firm, the agency, and I would just underline the third bullet there perhaps. What we would like to do is say that the program that we offer is an integrated approach between research, public opinion research, communications, and engagement. And obviously, the big part of what we're going to talk about tonight is engagement, and I'll try to describe that as we move forward. We have worked with, as it indicates, hundreds of school districts and community colleges, several of those in the Chicagoland area, working with Naperville right now as a matter of fact, a couple of projects with the College of the Page, Harper College, and I could mention a lot of school districts that we've either done community engagement or research or communications work in the Chicagoland area. I have been with, you can see there, the agency's been doing this kind of thing for a number of years. I joined the agency about a dozen years ago and will be the primary person working with your school district should you decide to move forward. My background includes about 25-plus years as Director of Planning and Communications for one of the largest school districts in the state of Missouri. So just a little bit of background about the firm. We are proud of the fact we have had the opportunity to win a few awards in this area, and some of them have been national. One of the things that I think is really important as we think about this program is that it will be citizen-led. And that's very, very important because research like this by the Edelman Group, which they do surveys for trust and credibility in the United States and around the world, and you can see these factors that are listed there. And especially, I would point to the final bullet, who can really be trusted? It's a person like me, somebody that rubs elbows with me. Unfortunately, that is true. Unfortunately, it's not CEOs, it's not presidents, it's not unfortunately superintendents, elected officials, but it's people like me that I trust. And I would hope that as we put together this program like we do many programs, that it will be citizen-led, it will be people that are not employed by the school district but rather have an interest. So there will be that voice. And so that's an important piece to keep in mind as we move forward. Public engagement or community engagement is, you know, for a district to move forward with key initiatives, regardless of what those may be, to make significant improvement needs public permission. And one of the ways that that happens is to involve the community so the community can indeed feel that it's their program that they are promoting. People won't support what they don't understand. And through this process, everyone has the opportunity to be at the table to understand. I would point particularly to the bullet, discovery is more powerful than persuasion. No one wants to be told what to do and when to do it, et cetera. Rather, they'd rather discover and realize that that's something that I have internalized that is particularly important. So that's one of the things that this program really promotes, discovery in terms of how and what we need to move forward with in this particular school district. There are some, there are kind of two levels of involvement. One is public opinion research. That's statistically accurate. It is quantitative data. The other is the active involvement of stakeholders. That's the qualitative piece, and that's what we'll be talking about tonight. But it's important that before you move forward with any key decisions of the board in the future relative to planning and deployment of resources, that the quantitative data also merges with what you're going to determine and find out in terms of the qualitative data. We have learned the hard way that there are some best practices that need to be in place for a successful community engagement program. It needs to involve a large number of people. And we're going to see some slides here in a few minutes that show a large number of people. And in many of our programs, districts of large size especially, if you've got key issues that you're dealing with, there will be 400 to 500 to 600 folks that will be involved. Indeed, this program is a you all come program. It is not done in a closet. Everyone, everyone has an opportunity to be at the table and participate and have their voices heard. The second item there, dialogue. There are things that you need to tell your community. Perhaps more importantly though, as you've, as I've heard tonight, there are some things that the community would like to tell you. And by the way, there are things that the community needs to tell each other. And this is a process where that can happen. We simply bring a structure of a process for dialogue for your community that results in some consensus in terms of giving you some direction for the future. So dialogue is very, very important, and there will be also continuing ongoing two-way communication. Other key factors that we think are important as we move forward is that there must be internal acceptance and support in the program. The board must support this. The superintendent must support this. Staff must support this. Principals must support this for it to be successful. And we can point to situations in school districts where engagement, community engagement has not been as successful as it perhaps should have been. And one of the factors often is that it doesn't have the internal support that it needs. So I appreciate the board taking a long, hard look at this and making sure that this is the direction that you want to go. We work with you to create a clear charge, the parameters for why we're doing community engagement. We talk specifically about that as we move forward. It is coordinated by what we refer to as a facilitating team. We like to use this terminology rather than the steering committee because we're not going to steer anything anyway, any direction. What happens as a result in terms of the product of this process will be what it will be. We have no preconceived idea as to what your final recommendations will be, your action plans that might come out of this. It will be because whatever the community, whatever results in terms of that community dialogue. Citizen leadership, I've already mentioned that that is particularly important, so I won't belabor that point. I've said that it involves a large number of people, which means it's more than the usual suspects. This is not a blue ribbon committee of the president of this and the chairman of that and the, and, you know, of your key city groups, but it's indeed a you all come process. Now, we want leadership there, participating in this process, but we want folks like me, just average people in your community that will be participating. It is an open process totally, and we will create a comprehensive timeline. It'll have a beginning and an end. It doesn't go on forever. And it will be data-driven. We don't just come together and say, okay, what are we going to talk about tonight? But it will be data-driven, and the facilitating team will be the key folks who provide that information. Although, most of the time, at our first large community engagement session where there are hundreds there, one of the first questions we ask as this district moves forwards, what do we need to study? What do we need to address? What do we need to review? And that gets built into the syllabus as we move forward. Again, we try to make sure that this whole process is done in a very professional, structured, but open way. It is It is workshops, it is not open mic. When people come, they're given a number, it's, that gives them their workshop table for the evening, and everything is done in a workshop setting, in small groups, and they must come to consensus. We will document thoroughly what happens at each of those sessions, at each of the tables, and create an executive summary that begins to be a building block for recommendations as we move forward. We just finished a program in Iowa City School District, and I just highlighted a couple of the phrases here. This is a letter that was sent to the newspaper from a citizen that had decided that they wanted to participate and came. Notice the number of folks that he's talking about, 400-plus people were there, he says. And he says that throughout the room you could sense, see the intense productive discussions, and that's what we're about. Oftentimes, people come together and it's an open mic and you would get finished, and we say, what is the production out of this? We want these sessions to be productive. They are building blocks for decisions that need to be made for the future. Another quote, another letter, organizing a productive exercise in citizen participation, engage each other in structured, meaningful, and yes, often openly partisan debate. I felt like we were all actually working with each other, and that's the objective that we would, we would want to create. Here is the documentation. These sessions, these workshop sessions are basically two hours in length. Final time will be decided by facilitating team, but we begin with a data or informational presentation of the topic of the evening. That could be staff development, it could be, I remember in one district, we began a program saying, let's identify what research says are the characteristics of a high-performing school district, and then let's build our syllabus around how we measure up to those high-performing characteristics, characteristics of a high-performing school district. The group will work, making a decision at their table, will write a verbatim response, sometimes we don't even correct spelling that's on those worksheets. Then from that, we will write an executive summary for the evening, and as I mentioned, those are consensus points, are, begin to be building blocks for recommendations for, that will eventually come to the Board. Now, there are various models, developing the plan and validating the plan, more particularly, I think we're probably looking here at the developing plan. And so I want to spend just a few minutes talking about how that this would work. As I mentioned earlier, we said that we would begin with a, working with you, with the facilitating team, and finalizing a board charge, a charge that you will, as a Board, agree to and adopt. And that, we will begin the community engagement sessions by indicating what your, what that charge is. The charge says, here's what we want you to look at, it can be broad or it can be specific. There are examples from other school districts that we'll share with you. And it can also say, create some parameters, here's what we don't want you to look at. So keep that in mind. The next piece is beginning to build a facilitating team. That's about 12 to 15 people. It includes a couple of Board liaisons, it includes citizens, will work very hard at getting the right people on the bus, so to speak, in terms of, in terms of citizens, and that may be three or four or five or six. Usually, there are a couple of those folks who will come to the forefront as chair people that will do all the moderating of all the sessions and direct the entire, the entire program. Also on that facilitating team will be representatives of the staff, teacher associations, or if there are other unions in your, in your school district, will talk about who needs to be a part of that, that group. Key people need to be at the table. Obviously, the superintendent of schools and perhaps a couple of other key cabinet members would be a part of that. So around 15 people. We will meet on a regular basis to plan, monitor, and adjust the entire program as we move forward. Once we begin to move forward, we will create or work through this community, these community engagement sessions, and, and those are topic-related, as I have already mentioned. I don't know what your topics might be. That will be determined by the facilitating team, and what we like to have happen, if it's a, is really give the folks, the 300, 400, 500, however many folks are at that first session, an opportunity to weigh in on, here's what those topics need to be as we build the syllabus, okay? So we'll have those series of meetings, and I said that each of those become a building block for recommendations for the future. A quick outline, and obviously, there's a lot more detail there. Other plans are charts, models are provided there. Here's one that I just finished in the Rockwood School District, one of the larger school districts in the state of Missouri, Decatur Public Schools. So a little bit different variety of how that model looks, but much of the same ingredients. One of the things that's very important is that, is that, you know, the old adage of the tree falls in the forest, will anybody hear it, or will it make a noise, or whatever? A lot of times, school districts will do planning, and not very many people will know about it. That's not what we want to happen here in this school district or in any school district where we're doing community engagement. We will use every vehicle possible to communicate to everyone in your community, saturate your community with messages about the program. So these, this is, this is just a list. It's important that everybody have the opportunity to participate in this process, and we want to make sure that that, that happens. We like to brand the program, give it a separate branding. You'll see there in the bottom left, the branding for Naperville, I mentioned Iowa City, others that are, that are there, and we will work with, again, the facilitating team in branding. And the reason why we do with this is we want it, remember I said, that this is a citizen-led, citizen-driven process. Yes, it has your support, yes, it has your sanction, no, we're not going to do anything that you, you know, don't approve of, but it is going to be citizen-led. And it is important that people begin to see that it is a entity kind of on its own, and that's the reason why we like to create a separate branding for the process. Now, in terms of literature, these are brochures that have been created, Woodstock School District 200 on the left there, School Talk 200, Elgin Community College, Pattonville School District in the St. Louis area, Decatur Public Schools, there are all kinds of mechanisms for people to give input and feedback. These are just some forms that have been used, the website, this is a meeting in St. Joseph, Missouri, this is in a gymnasium with about 600 people one night when basically they decided to go to middle school programs rather than junior high programs. They also decided to determine basically what size their elementary schools ought to be in terms of what research says. Because they had a number of elementary schools that was, was really kind of creating a problem for their budget, and some of them were very, very small, 100, 200 kids in them. We will use, this is another example of a website that had media, video streaming in it. You'll see the schedule on the right there for, for the sessions. We've used video for promoting of programs and social media. Obviously, the media in your area will want to be in tune with what's going on and what's being discussed, so that not only folks who are coming to your meetings are going to know, but folks reading the newspaper or blogs or other social media will, will know. These are, this is just a list of the more specific services that we would provide as part of helping you move through this structured engagement program. I won't take the opportunity to actually read those, you can, you can do that. One of the things I want to stress is, and I think I've already said it, is that we don't come in with a preconceived idea as to what recommendations are going to come out of a program like this. We're not coming in with a square peg and trying to put it in the wrong, you know, in a round hole. That will not work. And it's important that we all believe that for this, for a program like this to be successful. The other thing I would want to say to you is that we don't come in and say, you've got to do it this way. Remember that I said, the facilitating team will actually customize the program for your school district. So while we come in with a process, we come in with a lot of work over a number of years in terms of what we know that works and what doesn't work, we'll share that with you, we'll work closely with your facilitating team and your entire community, including you as, as Board and staff. But, but it's not a straightjacket program that we're going to force upon you. It will be designed, developed, customized, monitored, adjusted by your facilitating team, by citizens. Be happy to respond to questions. Again, this is a pretty quick overview. I've given Eric a notebook that she and I are going to begin to go through in the morning if we have that opportunity, and because there's a lot of detail, and I've just tried to get the surface.
Yes, I had asked Dan to do a 15-minute overview, and you know, certainly, there's a lot of detail behind, you know, the big picture here, and the committee did take a little harder look at it. You also have a 27-page document there in your folders that goes into more detail about some of the work that goes on behind, you know, the introduction here. Certainly want to open it up for questions for Mr. Burns and/or any of the committee that would like to share their thoughts, and we did have broader discussions at the committee level.
When we met, we heard presentations by both Unicom and EPRO, and Unicom fairly became our choice. That's why Mr. Burns was invited to come here. Notice that the first step in the process is the board charge, and what we reviewed at that meeting of both EPRO and Unicom was the goals that we had for community engagement, the specific goals that had been bestowed upon a superintendent here for community engagement as the working charge we worked with during that meeting. In light of the presentations tonight, we're the facilitating committee comprised of representatives of the community, staff, the teachers unit, are charged with coming up with specific topics. I asked you to look to see if you're comfortable with those, that goal that we have for the superintendent as the charge for the community engagement process. That's step one. Step two, with respect to the facilitating committee, I'll talk to Brad a little bit about this. I would invite each member of the Board to give us five names, six names of people that you believe should might be candidates for the facilitating committee that we could consider. As Mr. Burns mentioned, committee itself would be comprised of about 12 to 15 individuals, including Brad, myself as a Board representative, Dr. Harris, and some of the staff, and a representative from CDA, I mean, the, the collective bargaining unit. So we're talking maybe about six, seven other community members at most here. But we want your input on that, obviously. And we believe, at least I believe, and I'll speak to Brad, that community members must be representative of the broad base of the community. They must be people who have the ear tuned to what's going on in our district. And it doesn't mean that they can't have specific interests or agenda that they'd like to address, because I think they need to be people who are mindful of that there is, that we are a diverse community, and that we want to have representation, we're here from all corners of the community, not just certain segments of the community. And I think that's the key, in case we're, so we're ensuring that we have people just like us that are heard at these large sessions. And that's so key because we need that volume. And we'll discuss that some of the people, okay, all the comments aren't here. The community engagement process we're about to initiate is not focused at all on just Jefferson. Jefferson may have discussed it under the facilities, but we have a lot, number of facility issues we would hope to address throughout the community engagement process. There was a reference made, the Board was already discussing a referendum date, I'm not sure what discussion that was because I didn't participate in that. I do know that Andy Johnson spoke at the last Board meeting we have in open comments, this position of the President, the parent organization that supported Jefferson, saying that there could be a referendum on a certain day, but that's the only reference I have or heard to a referendum, and it wasn't from a member of this Board, Jefferson. This is a broad-based effort to really understand what our community wants and help us prioritize some of the budget, budget issues we're going to be addressing throughout this year. So that's just some comments.
Yeah, I agree with Jim. Cut some of the quotes from earlier, telling me why hire a firm, well, we should be engaging the community, that's what this is about. The community wants to have a dialogue, that's what this is about. So I think, now, this was a goal the Board established for this next year, and as I said in the last meeting, I think if we go through this process, which is a very detailed, vigorous process, it'll, it'll help kind of establish a benchmark for future decisions in coming years. So I think this process is critical. You know, I did have the opportunity, not in this seat, to participate in that Naperville District 203 workshops last week, and it is, it is, it's open to the community, as Mr. Burns said, it's going to be critical upon us as Board members and the facilitating team and others to reach out to our friends and community members and business associates to get people there. This is going to be as successful as the number of people that get there. The more participants we have, the more meaningful it's going to be. So at the end of this process, which is a very fluid, data-driven process, and a session I helped facilitate last week, you know, there's takeaways from the end of it. So each table has a discussion about a particular issue, and there's feedback again, and that's all gathered by the consultant, and in the end, presented back by the facilitating team to more, we just, we don't, we just basically receive the recommendation of the facilitating team. So I think, I think this is critical, it's not so much about the Board talking or the school district talking to people that's listening. The Board is not really participating in these sessions on any given topic, they're just walking around, listening, observing the process. I think this is exactly what we need. I've seen this done in the past for my clients, other school districts, I think this is exactly what we need. I think it's, I view, there is a cost to it, there's also a cost, a cost in not doing this. We described ourselves from our key, our key purpose this year in focusing on students and doing the technology things and potentially professional development, I think this, this could be huge distraction. So I, I see the cost as an investment in our future of having a conversation with our community. So I, again, I've seen this happen, I think it's very supportive, but the first couple months about creating a brand, promoting the brand, getting our people there, talking about it, we want people talking about it in the grocery store, talking about it at the soccer games, we've got to get people there. So I think it can be very successful for us, and I think this stuff hopefully we take in the next meeting is key, you know, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other questions or comments?
Just to understand, so Unicom will be used for this meeting, this roundtable community meeting, then would we do any other survey or anything else that's reaching out, or is it just that night?
I think, as you recall, one of my slides said that there were two pieces of data that is critical. One is the One is the qualitative piece, which involves the active involvement of stakeholders in these sessions. The other piece is statistically accurate public opinion research. And we would certainly recommend that the district consider that. And then the merger of that information causes you to have some pretty powerful data to make decisions for the future.
If you remember, Joanne, one of the things we did last, this time last year is we did do a public opinion, you know, survey targeted. And we did some general questions. It wasn't all about facilities. There was certainly a theme there, but it was, there were some broad, general program questions too. Now, if, what we're focusing on here this evening is more the qualitative component here. Had pulling the people into a common environment, you know, throwing a topic on the table and talking about it, trying to get people, you know, understanding about what their thoughts are. If at some point we decide we want to do more of a quantitative piece, we would have to have further discussion about that. Right now, that is not what we're looking to do. We do have, you know, some of that data, I think, I believe is still very valid, about people's opinions of the school district and, you know, input on our programming, you know, and the success of their kids. So, I mean, if you remember, there was some pretty high correlation with some of those broad-based questions that we had a year ago, when we did that. So, but anyway, we need to, you know, that's just a second component. So what we're really talking about here is more the qualitative component, about the meetings, facilitating the discussion, taking that information back and summarizing it, which is what Unicom would do for us, is not only guide the process, but also summarize in a qualitative manner so that the recommendations are valid and reliable. Does that make sense? Right? Good summary?
Anybody else?
I've got a couple of questions. I'm just, I'm struggling a little bit, you know, about, you know, we've talked a lot about use of dollars tonight, and, you know, this is a big cost to my mind, okay? And I have to get over that hurdle. I'm not, I'm not there yet. And I think that I literally could identify five, 10 significant questions that are confronting the district. And I think that, you know, I would be surprised if we had items pop up that aren't on what I would call that 10-item list. I like the idea of the committee, but, you know, part of what we do, we're ambassadors of the school, we communicate with other people. And that feedback, I get feedback, I believe everybody gets feedback. I, you know, one of the concerns I have is, again, dollars, but have we ever done anything like this, this formal in the past? And based on that, I'd love to see what that was, and I'd love to see what we did with it, okay, after the fact. I partook in various programs like this with the city, the YMCA, Wheaton Theater, the parking facilities in downtown Wheaton, and a number of other, the Park District, et cetera, and I don't know that I felt, I don't know that I got to where I wanted to be when those were done, okay? I think, you know, I could go through and be specific on every one of those, but I don't know that it achieved really what my expectation was, a real strong direction. This next week, by the way, I think the city council will be seeing the long-range plan for the city of Wheaton, and I think if one were to observe that, or see it, or attend to see possibly when that's presented, you know, that's the kind of thing that we're going to get out of this. It's kind of a, you know, it's an item identification of areas, but it may, you know, it's not conclusive. It's going to talk about areas that we may want to address, but I don't think it reaches conclusion, because again, you know, there's no official vote, it's coming from a committee and so on. You know, citizen leaders, you know, that's what we're here for, and I think that's why we've been elected. We need to communicate with our members. I just think that, you know, we're talking about being a high-performance district. You know, I guess we perceive not to be a high-performing district. I think we'll talk about that in a little bit here. And I, but, you know, I don't want to start with that presumption, because I think we are an achieving district. And maybe if that's not correct, so be it. You know, the, you know, I feel like we identified this committee recently, and we're kind of jumping right into a contract. I'm a little concerned about that. You know, we haven't got, you know, there are citizen members of the committee. I want to make sure that, you know, there are those people that we've selected beyond that committee are also supportive of this concept. You know, we have a staff that, you know, does public relations, and we've done this questionnaire in the past. Again, is this a cost we want to incur right now? I surely, and I think it was addressed earlier tonight, I don't want this to be a supportive program for Jefferson, or another referendum, or anything. And I'm glad Jim commented on that, because that was, you know, I think the thrust of what I've heard a little bit. So again, I just, you know, it's part of our goals. I have to be, still get over the hurdle of this is an economic decision, and the product we're going to get is going to be worthy of value of what we, what we pay for. And I'm a little tainted, because I've seen a number of these performed in Wheaton, and I've never been felt warm and cushy when it was all done that I'd achieved what I was hoping to achieve. So, you know, I've got to study this a little further, I've got to see the details more tonight, but, you know, I'm not totally on board yet, so.
I'll comment on a couple of things. There were several questions there, and we can certainly talk about it more. I mean, there's multiple answers there. Couple of things, have this board done this before, and I think some of you, you know, yes. In fact, Unicom has done work for us. It was about 10 years ago, I don't have the exact details. It was prior to the high school referendum, if I remember correctly.
It wasn't a community engagement though, was it?
Targeted. It was very targeted for what do we do about our high schools, if I remember correctly. So that kind of leads me to the next question here, that you had a big question, there were several there, but one that is, the board can direct whatever, you know, from the board charge, you can direct, do you want answers to technology? What's the community going to support? What's the community want? You want to be that specific, that's what we can go get. If you want to be very specific about facilities, you can be very specific about facilities. If you don't want to do that, you don't have to do that. It can be as specific or as broad as the board chooses. If we know what our targets are, like, you know, feel like we know what they are, then that can be part of the charge, if that's what we believe we want to do. Finances is always a popular topic. In fact, you had a list of, you know, topics that are common themes in school districts and everything. So, you know, we can be as specific or as broad as we want, and that really depends on the board and how they direct staff and, you know, vendor here to how to organize the discussions. So I think those are just a couple of brief responses. I don't know if anybody else, you know, has, sure, and certainly we continue to, you know, fill in some blanks for it.
I think the critical piece of all of this is the charge from the board. I think that's the key, and I think maybe in some of the other situations that you mentioned, Jim, the charge wasn't quite specific enough, wasn't quite directive enough, or when they got the results, if they got results that they didn't expect, and they didn't think they would hear, and maybe they didn't like them, then they somehow figured out a way to wiggle on. So, so I think there's a lot, I mean, of that to be done. I mean, when I worked for BP, we would have, you know, PW came in to do a study at Deloitte and two, all these people couldn't do studies, and the knock on BP was that they, you know, they would do a study and then put it on the shelf. So what I'm hearing Mr. Burns say is that there will be some far-reaching effects, and maybe some practices that we get into as a result of this. If I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, for example, you said that this, this may give us a way to do some meaningful, ongoing two-way communication. Because this board has tried that. We have chance to chat, nobody comes. We have, you know, one a month, you know, one person would come, and it would be the same person, and usually the same person who made public comment tonight. And I don't mean tonight, I meant at that time. The same person who would come and make public comment would be the person who would show up for chance to chat, and there'd be six board members, five board members, however many, superintendent, citizen superintendent, and nobody else. So, so we want to gain meaningful, and I'm understanding that what you will kind of gain or get out of this will be an ongoing method for us that we feel the community will support, with a, we'll have this two-way communication.
And I could point to several school districts who, after we've done a program there, they have followed up doing a comparable program for subsequent years to guide the project. I can show you a letter from a superintendent to St. Louis Post-Dispatch, that where they're talking about the foundation that was created in the initial program, and how they've repeated that over the years, and how it's guided the school district. So there are multiple examples of how, you know, we're here just for a little while, but the school district itself has taken that model and continued to use it for a variety of planning efforts.
Well, and I, thank you for that, I appreciate that. And the other thing that I did want to say is, we used a community engagement process to come up with what you see behind you, our mission, vision, and values. And we did that in-house, we did not use a consultant, but we did that in-house. It took a long time, it took a lot of effort. We did do that, and you see how long that lasted in our community. I think that was around, shortly after Joanne came on the board, so 2007, 2009, something like that. But we did that, and we did focus groups, we did a lot of community gathering of input. So yes, we've done that process in District 200, not as extensive, obviously, and we have taken what the community has told us and tried to live by it. So I think our track record is good with that kind of thing.
One follow-up on that, you know, that was a great cost-effective program, is what I heard, okay? It was quite, you know, it was done in-house, and it, you know, and it achieved a very long-term value. And that, that's where I'm a little bit over, I've got to get over that hurdle. You know, and again, I'm concerned that we're going to come up with BTEA scores, we're going to come up with Jefferson, we've come, but guess what? We got economic constraint. So, you know, we have to make sure those are tied together. I don't want to hear about all the things we need to do, but we can't afford. And so, you know, again, I'm just concerned that, you know, we're getting economic value on a, on a program, or description, or identification of items that we can physically deal with. I mean, again, if we're going to come up with all these items and the community wants it, but they're not going to support it by referendum, because that may be the only place we can go, you know, what'll we achieve? And that's my biggest concern, and I got to get over that hurdle. I'm struggling with that concept, so.
I was, I was just going to follow up, thank you for that comment, because we would not want to bring any kind of recommendation to the board that hadn't been vetted or reviewed from a financial perspective. This is not, the result of this is not a Christmas list that cannot be implemented. But rather, there would be obviously any kind of meaningful initiative that will move the district forward will require the deployment of resources. Those resources may be time, it may be staff, it may be dollars. And the community, as we look at a particular program or initiative, they must understand that. And if, as a result of a product of the process, is an initiative that the community wants you to move forward with, then they will also understand, here's the price tag. You can't bring initiatives and recommendations to a body like you and not also bring with it, here are, you know, the benefits, and here are the costs.
I think one of the questions that's very tangible that, that, you know, staff struggles with, and certainly the board does too, is technology. You know, it's a common theme. We can do anything, a lot of the solutions are out there, but how do we pay for it? You know, how, what decisions do we have to make to be able to implement some, you know, incorporate more devices and incorporate? And, you know, the revenue stream is one of those questions. Is it, should it be fee-oriented? Should it not? Should we do the bring-your-own-device strategy, all-in or not? Should we, should the district support it? Should we go out and do long leases for, you know, to put a one-on-one solution into our middle schools, or our high schools, or, you know, I mean, that's the decision. And I think we have to have a real sense, and it's hard to guess what the community will support and what they want. And I think those are some of those hard questions on that topic. And there's other topics too. But that's one that I struggle with, you know, as a superintendent, where are we headed there? And, because they can bring all types of recommendations for it. I really would want to hear from the community on that particular topic. What is it that the community believes we should do, and then how can we create it, you know, and make it happen physically? So, every session I've observed or been a part of in the past, you know, in any organization, there's always the financial component. It has to be part, that has to be one of the evenings, or maybe two evenings in some districts. That piece has to play out, and that's a big part of it. And, you know, I think that sometimes we don't know what we don't know, and where the community would be. And I think that's the things that you might uncover by going through this. That's just my experience, and my, and you're absolutely right, I've been involved in things that I already knew. However, if we are to do, are providing some direction, there may be some things that face us, no, you know, we're not really interested in that. But here's what we are interested in moving forward. So I think that's something that is very valuable coming out of this. I will say this in one final, you know, I'm certainly curious where the board sits on this, because this is a big decision. It's a very important decision. And in that frame, I would encourage as superintendent, we have to have board support on this. As Dan said, if you don't have board support, or if it's, you know, halfway, it's going to be very hard. It's going to be very difficult, even from a staff perspective, to move forward if we don't have it. And maybe, you know, I'm just encouraging you to think hard about this, because it is very, very important here, at this table, to have, you know, support moving forward as we go out to the community. Because if we don't, then, you know, we're already starting behind the fence already, and that's going to be very challenging. So I just want to share that, and I do want to make sure we have enough dialogue to make sure that we do understand it as a board and we do move forward accordingly.
And I would like to say, if we're going to be involved, we want it to be a successful program that's meaningful, that is, that the district really can move forward with. We want it to be successful more than you do, and certainly you want it to be successful, so.
I have a couple of comments and then a couple of questions. To Jim's point, in terms of doing it in-house versus house, we, that was a very cost-effective program. And I will say that of many things that we've done in this district, that has been a great thing, because we learned from that, to me, one of the key things, that our community values high-quality teachers. And that has just been a guiding light for us in a lot of decision-making, so that's been great. In terms of being able to do it in-house nowadays, I guess my question would be, or not question, but comment would be, I think enough water has flowed under the bridge between then and now, in terms of decisions perhaps that the board has taken. Just even the overall change in the country, in terms of how they view elected officials, how they view our role, their role, so much has changed in this country that I just wonder whether the kind of dialogue we had then would actually be possible now without some sort of mediator. Almost like if you're talking about marriage, you know, yes, the husband and wife can sit down and talk things out, but sometimes a mediator is the better person, because they don't feel, they feel like there's somebody without baggage in between. So that would be my thinking on that. Like you, I mean, all of us are of an age where I'm sure we've taken part in enough focus groups, and thanks for sharing what kind of groups that work in church and other things, that, you know, you do want to make sure. I think it all comes down to this board charge. And I do have to say, I am a little unclear about what the board charge is. And I noticed that one of your services was to help the board. Was, was, I'm not saying we need it. Well, but, I mean, was that the plan that the board, that we would have some help in developing that charge? And out of related question, going to the board's support of this, you were saying it's important to have internal support. If it's not a unanimous support by the board, is that workable, or is that like a referendum that if you don't have unanimous support, you probably are not going to be able to move forward successfully?
Well, it would be nice were it unanimous. If not, what we can't have happening is, is the board voting to move forward, and a couple of board members, or key staff members for that matter, negating the process in a public kind of way. People need to be on board, saying this is a positive, I want to work for it, I want to make sure it's successful. So even, even if you were to vote no, and you were not unanimous, I would still hope that it would be your desire that the program be successful. And yes, we will help you draft that charge. Some school districts, the charge is very specific. We're working with a very large school district right now, on a very short program, and the charge is... And the charge is, go to the community. We're going to close one of these two schools, and we're going to build a new one, or we're going to renovate. We want to know what these parents think, and that report needs to come back to the board. Very specific charge. I would say in a school district like yours, where there needs to be some specific items that you want to be addressed by the community, at the same time, I wouldn't squeeze it down so much that you don't give some creativity to the community for you to hear what is really on their mind and in their heart. But we've got numerous samples of what other boards of education have developed as a chart. I'm not saying that any of those are particularly exemplary, but they're ideas, and obviously yours needs to be yours. And that's the reason why I kept putting that square peg around those kind of things, because this needs to be yours, not somebody else's.
If I could make a couple more comments. I will point out that this, yes, we did that in-house, but this was kind of a micro effort in terms of what we really intended to do, and that was to come up with a long-range strategic plan. And we completed this, and then tried to do some sort of strategic planning in-house. And that, we're kind of there in that we focus on these when we talk about our goals, but we never really got to the written document, living, breathing plan part. So while, yes, we did this in-house, I think this is an order of magnitude more work, because I think what we're really looking for here is a direction, and really a strategy for implementing some very major, maybe, changes to our district that our community really does want.
Yeah.
Or maybe they don't want, but it'll tell us. And I think it's a whole different ballgame.
And I would say that you, as a board, obviously, you're intelligent folks, you're a resident of the community. You can sit here, or you can take a Saturday and make some very good plans about the future of this school district. None of that's going to get implemented if those plans are not saturated in the community and your community is not supporting you to move forward. That's what this is all about.
I want to just take and comment on the in-house thing. The magnitude of what we're talking about with the scenario here, the staff we currently have, we cannot do this in-house. Okay, I'm crystal clear. Even a school district to our south here, that's been referenced a couple of times, have three times the communication office that we do, and they still, okay, we cannot do this in-house. We don't have the capacity. We do not. We can do some other things at a much smaller scale, but if it's this large a scale with this much planning, we cannot do that. You all are very aware of what's on staff's plate, okay? And this is a piece of it. It's not, there's several other things that are pretty important, too. So it all depends on if this is what the board would choose to do. We have to have help doing this. We cannot, we don't have dedicated staff to make this happen. And I can assure you, it won't play out that way. We can't. And maybe the board doesn't want to go there right now. If you don't, then we have to take a step back, go back to committee, and start to look. It all depends on what we're able to do and how we can, with the scope of what we're going to do. So that's why, certainly felt like we wanted to get a broad look and engage a lot of people in some conversation. So that's why we took the approach we took here, to go out and seek help, and certainly wanted to bring forward what we felt like was the best group to help us get that done.
A couple of points. We're not voting on a contract tonight. This is just a presentation. We'll have a couple of weeks of board meetings before we vote on anything. If it turns out, though, that the will of the board is not to engage in what we present here as a broad-based community engagement effort, so be it. But then I would think it would be incumbent upon us to review the goals that we set for our superintendent, because it was certainly my understanding, when we set those goals, that we were going to go through a broad-based community engagement effort to learn where the community is on such things as finances, on such things as facilities, on such things as curriculum, and whatever else I can think of right here in the next two minutes. If we are going to go through this broad-based community engagement effort, I endorse what Brian has said, we need to retain an outside firm. Now, if that's not the will of the board, that's fine. If we need to narrow this down and make it very specific, that's fine, too. But then I think it's incumbent upon us to revisit the goals that we've set for our superintendent and make sure that they're aligned with what we really want to do with respect to the communication process.
Just a couple, follow-up, and then I'm done. One of the things, I know we're not voting on it tonight, but I think we have to have the background information. Another comment I want to say about, I think I'm hearing that we're going to have some achievement from this study that's going to be conclusive. It's going to say, we should buy computers, we shouldn't buy them, we should charge students, we shouldn't charge them. We're not going to get a definitive answer like that. We're going to get choices, and the most popular answer, maybe, I don't know. But it's not going to be like 90% of the people say the following. We're not going to see that kind of result. Again, there's other facilitator-type items that can be done. I'm also curious whether the Illinois Association of Business officials has a program like this that may be not as extensive. Maybe we have to take a few steps forward before we jump in with both feet. So again, I'm trying to gather the position that I can support this wholeheartedly, and I need to have these questions answered, and that's why I'm bringing them up tonight.
Yeah, I want to make sure there's no mistake. I support the community engagement approach from the committee. You guys have done a great job. Thank you, Mr. Burns, for your presentation. I, too, like Jim, is, I will tell you honestly, I never suspected that a $60,000 price tag would be attached to community engagement. Again, maybe that's because I didn't know what the scope and effort and the end goal was going to be. So I, too, struggled, not because of your company or your proposal, but just because, albeit it's a goal, I support that goal, but I never fathomed a $60,000 price tag being attached to that effort. So I believe that we need to slow down. I think we need to revisit, maybe explore some other options, maybe revisit what we expect of that community engagement, and just stop back, step back. I think it's valuable, no question about it. I think it's important that we hear their voices, but there might be some other ways that we might be able to do it more economically, or maybe just land on a different expectation of community engagement. But I applaud the proposal, not the proposal per se, but the goal of the committee, and that being a goal for the board and for this, no question.
Well, just one other comment. I'm just absorbing what everybody is saying, but I do also want to commend the committee and just remind all of us as board members that we all bring something, and we respect each other's expertise in various areas. It's true, it is a group decision, we have to think about it as a group, but we do bring expertise in areas that are very valuable to us. And I think it is important to note that Mr. Paulson has professional expertise in this area, not from this seat, but from the other side of the seat. And Mr. Roman is a master of due diligence. So when you put those two things together, I mean, I just factor that into our thinking, is all I want to say, as we're considering a recommendation that's coming from our peers. Doesn't mean it has to be no questions asked, but I do think those are important considerations in my mind.
Just one quick thing to add, when I do that, to get paid.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to comment, and certainly what I encourage the board to do at this point, if you have very specific questions about this, I would encourage you to send them to me soon. I would say within the next, within a week, if not sooner. I know you all have lives outside, away from the table here, but definitely within the next several days, because we have to start to make some decisions, one way or the other. We either have to move forward. The committee is scheduled to meet again, and we need to take a step back based on this conversation tonight, talk about where this may be headed. Maybe it's about, you mentioned the cost there, it is a monthly fee, so it's not an all-in number, but depending on the scope of this, it is a monthly fee. So if they work with us for four months, it's not $60,000. If they work with us for eight months, or 10 months, then it is. So I want to clarify that. Jim referenced that. It is a monthly fee, so it all depends on how long, or how many sessions, or how do we want to go about it with Unicom. Everybody has a little different approach to this, but that is their approach. And I think they explain that in the detailed document that you have there, which I know several of you have not had the chance to read, so I would encourage you to read that. Some of your questions might be answered in there, too, if you read. It's a long document, it's 27, 28 pages, so it has a lot of detail there. But I would encourage the board to send me those questions or concerns, and we certainly have to have a sense where we're at. The timeline that we were considering for this fiscal year, or this school year, was to try and do these sessions in some fashion, to be able to have some direction when we get to the budget time next spring, and when we get to decision time on anything for the following school year. That was the timeline. That's why we, if you look at the tentative schedule, June was kind of out there a little for a report, where we could start to make some planning decisions. Now, we would need to take another meeting time in October to have a broader discussion to get at the board table, and so be it. We can always have a special meeting to take action on any type of items. So if that's what we need to do, and if that's where we need to be, then that's where we need to be. But we want to make sure that everybody is understood where we're headed and why we're headed there, before we would move forward. It is too costly and too important not to have excitement coming from the board table, because the community will pick up that instantly. And if that's not there, it will be challenging for staff. It will be challenging for staff, certainly, I think, challenging for Unicom, because that is very, very important here, that we want to listen, we want the community to become informed about some of the decisions you do have to make in this table. And that's really what it's about. So it's my thoughts.
Am I correct in asking, we did put money in the budget for this, did we not?
Yes, that is correct.
How much did we put in the budget for it?
Okay, an additional $50,000 in the board budget, okay? But that's on top of what was there for other things that we've done. So we knew, we estimated, we weren't quite sure where we would land. That was an additional balance, but there's more than that in the line item for board services, for purchase services.
Wasn't that a part of the found money, of the $500,000?
No, no, it was not. That was in our original budget stuff. We knew we were thinking about the scope of this. Now, remember, we also had a line on that last year where we paid for the Caserta report. We also paid for the survey done by ECR, the community survey. So we already had funds, we paid $15,000 for the quantity. Yeah, Caserta was 15, and another 15 for the ECR survey. So approximately, I'm estimating there, nobody quote me exactly, but we already had $30,000 in the purchase services account for the board, for those services that we did last year. We added an additional funds there, assuming that we would have some type of, that we won't be doing those two broadly, since we did them. So we knew we were going to have some additional expectation here if we were going to do a much broader look of this.
If I could, I think our proposal clearly indicates that this is a proposal, and that as best we could determine in terms of timeline, and this is the way it's put together. I think we also say pretty specifically there that further discussions in terms of timeline, scope of service, et cetera, may require an adjustment in the amount. So again, don't overshadow that.
And I guess my comment would be this, if, so we have an amount of money in the budget, this is a non-recurring cost, and we talked about not using any of that personal property tax revenue for recurring items, but if we feel this is a worthwhile item, and I believe truly that it is, this will be the same thing, we use the output of this study the same way we use the output from the Caserta projection, the same way we use the output from the ECR survey. I mean, I don't think this board or the staff is in a position where we feel as though we have the money to have a survey done and then let it sit on the shelf. I don't believe that any of us sitting at this table would be that way. So in my view, having had money in the budget, having made it a goal, having done studies of this nature in the past, where we've paid people to come out and do them, all says to me that this is something that we should support and support wholeheartedly, because this will be very meaningful in terms of, it'll put the big perspective around a lot of the little things that we've done in the past. And it'll let us know what the community really wants, because you hear from single voices all the time, but you don't know if they're speaking for themselves. My friends speak to me, they're my friends. Our business colleagues speak to us. Typically, they like us, and they get along with us, that's why they talk to us. So we need to hear from people who we don't know, who are not necessarily our friends, but who are true stakeholders that we might not be able to reach.
I think that's it. One last thing. This is unrelated technically, but we just made a comment on the budget about the personal property replacement tax not being a recurring item. I don't agree with that.
I think Barbara spoke, she meant the corporate.
Corporate, that's, what did I say? I meant that.
The replacement, the corporate replacement.
Right. That is driven by the income tax or the earnings of businesses and people, basically businesses. So if you're, we just came out of a recession, if you, I guess we came out, but I don't yet. But the point is that if we stay economically sound, that will be a recurring revenue. So it's not like it's not going to be there in the future. The amount will vary based on economic times.
That's what I meant, it's not a stable.
Jim, at the last board meeting, Bill explained that his projection for what the revenue would be was $500,000 less than it actually is. So that's what is the found money. We're not sure that that amount from that tax base would be a reoccurring amount.
My hope is that we'll be reoccurring if the economic times continue, so.
Well, we totally have no control over it, is what I'm saying.
But again, I could say the same thing about tax money. If the real estate market declines substantially, we'll have less property tax revenue, et cetera. So again, doom and gloom, I would expect that to continue. It's not a one-time shock, and I don't think we should talk a lot about this.
We're just extremely cautious because of how crazy it's been the last five years. I can tell you from this, I'm very cautious. I would never assure that those types of funds or revenues are there.
Thank you for your clarification, because I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Burns, for being here this evening. We will be talking further and certainly be working with our committee on this and bringing back thoughts based on input this evening. And again, I encourage board members to please send me your comments in writing, so I can certainly help better understand where you're at. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we get to another media item, our student achievement data, Dr. Harris.
Yes, in just a short time, I will turn it over to Faith Dawgwith, our Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services, and she's going to provide an updated summary that we are required to do on an annual basis, based on Illinois state law, to update the board and the community on our mandatory assessments that we provide for the students in the springtime. But we also, as we've done in many years past, we also weave in many other pieces of data that we look at our student success at, too, because the best way to look at student achievement is not only the mandated test by the state, as I'm sure Faith will address over and over, but also looking at several pieces of data to measure our successes of our student achievement. So I'm going to turn it over to Faith and let her walk. So I'm going to turn it over to Faith and let her walk through the details of this report.
Great, tonight I'm going to talk to you a little bit about where are we now on different measures. I'm also going to talk about how the mile markers have changed, a lot of the state tests, the cut scores and things have changed, I'll talk about that. Want to spend quite a bit of time on where are we headed and most importantly, what are the plans in place to help us get there. So where are we now? We exceed state averages in all areas, we continue to be strong, we have a high number of students exceeding state standards as well. I'm going to do some district state comparisons, I'm also going to walk us through the very complicated process of adequate yearly progress reports called AYP. And right now, I want to spend a little bit of time on those mile markers. Usually, this presentation includes a lot of trend data, and I'm going to go through some of that, but it's very difficult to have trend data this evening on state tests because the cut scores have changed. And what I mean by that is what used to be a meets and what used to be an exceeds, you now had to have a higher number of questions correct to do that. Sort of similar to if a teacher's grading scale, an A was 90% to 100, and now all of a sudden the grading scale is 95% to 100 to be able to get an A. Compounding that a little bit is that they changed the content on the ISAT tests to reflect a little bit more of Common Core. Along with that, ACT also changed. We changed which students are included on the test scores. Prior to this school year, students that got a lot of accommodations in the amount of time that they were allowed to take that, some of our special education students or our health impaired students, those scores had not been included. This year, they were. Also, the change in cut score in ACT for reading was raised by one point, and in science, it was lowered by a point. Why the new cut scores? We've known about this in our district for a while, that the amount of competency that's needed on the ISAT was not the same level of competency that was needed by the time you got to high school. And we had been looking at our own cut scores and we came really close to what the state actually came up with, but I'll show you a slide here in just a minute that illustrates why the need for the cut scores. If you look at this, and this isn't current data, this is back from 2011, and I just pulled up our math scores. The blue columns are district and the state are red, and you can see third grade, fourth grade, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, things look really, really good. Then you have 11th grade. And I know when I stood here last year and when I stood here the year before, and he was looking at the question of Faith, what's happening in 11th grade? It is not that our students all of a sudden became less able, the tests became a lot more difficult, and it also, the Illinois state standards weren't always aligned with what nation standards and what students need to be able to do on the ACT. The state recognized that, and we're looking at, okay, we need to raise the bar at what that looks like, so that we have a more accurate picture, both from the parent perspective, student perspective, and the school perspective, of how are we really doing in preparing those students for that final goal when they take those tests in high school? So, the next slide shows what the cut scores look like and what our percentages would look like. This is what the new scores, this is in math, and what I want to draw some attention to is yes, our scores are remarkably lower than what they had been prior to that, but I also want to raise your attention to the difference between the district scores and the state's scores and those bars. In grade three, for example, there used to be a six percentage point difference between District 200 and the state. Look at it now, it's 21 percentage points. So while yes, District 200 and its parents are going home, and I'm sure I'm going to make lots and lots of phone calls, because it's going to look, if you just look at trend data alone, like, oh, our school and our district's scores have gone down. But comparatively, looking at other districts and how much of their scores are going to go down, we've raised the difference between District 200 and many other districts by showing that we do still have quite a few students that are at meets and exceeds. And I'm going to get into that a little bit more detail. This is the map. Then this is reading, and this again is with the new cut scores. And again, you can see there's a much bigger difference between those red and blue bars, but you also look, where we used to have really high and they'd get down to 11th grade, it's a level playing field now. We have similar number of students from one grade level to the next, showing proficiency. All right, I am going to come back to that, we're going to talk about ISAT data more in depth. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about AYP, and I know I did this at a few meetings ago, and we talked then just specifically about those schools that are Title I schools because we had to offer choice and we're offering supplemental educational services. Tonight, I'm also going to show you how all of the schools did on the AYP report. We know that's something that gets reported home to parents, and it's really complicated. So I want to kind of talk through that and give you some talking points of what that looks like. Talked about it before, for AYP, you need to have 95% of your students tested. You also, this year, need to have 92.5% of your students tested in all of those areas pass the test. I do want to point out that by the time the students take the test this March, because of No Child Left Behind, the target will be 100%. Unless you have 100% of your students passing or you make safe harbor, you will be a failing school. And that is in all subcategories, whether it's reading, whether it's white students overall, whether it's the ELL students, whether it's students with special education, all of those subgroups must be at 100% if Illinois doesn't get its waiver to not be held accountable by the No Child Left Behind legislation. So this is how that plays out. This is the elementary math scores for AYP. And if you kind of skim down the numbers, even just on the all categories, you begin to see some differences, like Bauer, for instance, makes it at 77%, but Whittier, with that pre-high score, does not. And I know you're going to say, well Faith, you said you had to have 92.5% of your kids to be able to do that. Here's what the state did. They talked about safe harbor, and what they did is they took the new cut scores and applied them to 2012 data, looked at what percentage of your students would make it, what your projection would be and able to be able to make an adequate amount of growth, and then looked at your 2013 data and gave you a yes or a no. So, if you had met the target before, you don't get a safe harbor target the next year because you had to have not made the cutoff to get a safe harbor target the next time around. So what it causes school districts to do is you flip-flop back and forth, and there's a lot of this that doesn't make a whole lot of sense when you try to apply this and explain it. Another question I get when I talk to parents is, well, why are there some categories that are blank? The state requires that you have 45 students in a particular subgroup to even have the data reported out. So that is why some of our schools, it's not because they do not have any black students, it's because they do not have 45 students in those grade levels that take these tests of that particular subgroup. This is what it looks like for elementary reading. Again, you look at Johnson, and if you looked at the math scores, they made it, and you have to have that why in every single category on both of these charts. Johnson made it all the way across for math, they did not make it in just their Hispanic students for reading. And I do want to point out that you can be a student that is Hispanic and limited English proficiency and has special education and is economically disadvantaged, and they would show up four times on this chart. Johnson did not make AYP because of two students in the Hispanic population. Otherwise, they would have made it all the way across. Same kind of things that happen if you look at Lincoln's data and you also look at Pleasant Your average person would say, well, why is one school yes and one school's not when you have those different percentages? It's because of the safe harbor. Middle and high school, this is math, I'd like to point out that Edison did make AYP in math this year. However, because they did not make it, this is the reading slide, for their special education students that have IAPs, their whole school is marked as failing and not making adequate yearly progress. I'd like to go on and get on to the other things because the AYP target doesn't really help us improve, it doesn't help us get better, it's just kind of a public relations nightmare is kind of a strong word, but it is to try to be able to explain all of this, especially over the phone, to a parent when you don't have this data in the set. So unless there are questions about AYP, I'd like to go on and be able to talk a little bit more in depth about our achievement data.
Just one question, so is next year when it's 100%, is it even conceivable for a school to make it if one student in that school doesn't pass?
The only way that I believe that you would do that is the schools that make it by the safe harbor target. Just like if you look down each of those, we, 92.5% was the cutoff. The only way we got yeses on there is that there was the safe harbor. So for those schools that got no's this year, they will be able to have a safe harbor target. Edison doesn't have much of a chance at all because they made it in so many of those categories and have to fail a year before they get a safe harbor target year.
It needs to go. And quite frankly, to answer your question, I'm not aware of any school in the state of Illinois that is prepared to hit that target. The only one that I, that is possible, there are some gifted magnet schools in the city, Chicago, that possibly, but because of the application process that goes into that, you know, they know what they have coming in, so there is possibility that they can hit that target. That is the only places I'm aware of.
They get to choose their students.
That's correct, there's an application process and they're not admitted if they, an area had a lot of pre-data to know whether they're going to hit it or not.
That's what they call the gifted family.
That's right.
One item comment, number one, I'm happy we're exceeding the state level, and I think that's a reflection of our staff, that's a reflection of the parents and the involvement of the parents, because that's as much, you know, a component of it, so that we need to be proud of that. I guess the big picture question I would ask, are we, I'm not an academic, are the academics of our staff happy with these numbers? And if not, where are we going to, how are we going to change them?
We're never totally happy with where we're at, it would be my answer to that. We're proud of our accomplishments, and if you talk to parents or the staff, there's certainly a great deal of pride in the student achievement here, but there are areas that we've addressed that we need to get better at. In fact, it's what I devote a gazillion hours to, because we need to improve our instruction. We need to have, the world is rapidly changing, and we're educating students for a world that we can't really have a great picture at yet, and we're still trying to learn the tools and the things that we have to do that. New research comes out every week with a better way to do things, we have to get that in the hands of teachers so that they have the materials, the new ideas, the research to do what we need to do. So I guess I sound like a politician when I'm answering this question, because I say, yes, we're really proud, but we do have things that we need to improve on. And I am going to talk about those things and the plans that we've got and what we're going to do at the end of this presentation. Each of our schools have data teams that they go through and look at this and identify, we really need to work on vocabulary, for example, or we're not doing very well on fractions. How are we going to do that? Where is that happening? What group of students does it happen with? So that we can identify those weaknesses, even with our current measures, and get better at our practices.
I think one of the intangible factors that plays into this a lot is the mobility of some of our students at different levels too. You know, there's, one thing that, you know, is not shown here is how long the students have been in our district. We have showed data in the past to the board here. The longer, we have these trends, the longer students are in our district, the more successful they are. Now, if we have them for 13 years, we are hitting the target. The ones that, you know, when we have a lot of in and out, that becomes challenging. The longer we have them, and we have that data in any form you want to look at it, you know, any subject, that shows the longer we have them, the better we do. But that mobility factor plays into it. Now, the economy played into all that recently, and so, you know, a lot of things with the economy, you know, whether it's finances or whether it's mobility factor of students, all of that's directly related. So that's another factor to think, you know, consider, we look at those things, when schools, especially certain schools in our district, pay real attention to that, because they have a high mobility rate, so.
I guess at the end of this presentation or down the road, I'd like to be able to say what we as a board can do to help facilitate via policy or whatever to help enhance the process.
I think Faith's going to get there in a few minutes.
All right, then I'm going to attempt to look at some trend data because we feel that it's really important. You can't just take data in its isolation, you have to have a context to get a sense of whether we're accomplishing what we need to do. So I've done that in a couple of different ways. The kind of ugly graph that you have up here is what the change in cut scores looks like for reading for the last three years, and you've got the red letters there that show where the state changed the cut scores. And it's important that I've done this since I got here, that we look at not only the meets percentage, which is the blue, but the exceeds, and then of course, those combined of what gets reported in the papers of what the meets and exceeds is. You'll see that we've gone down quite a few percentage points, and I understand why the parents and why some of the public might have a difficult time with that. We have known for a while at the district level of what we, what the cut score should be, and we've been presenting this to staff. So staff is more prepared for this and knew that this was coming long before the state even changed their cut scores. Dr. Harris has been getting up at opening day for a while and talking about what percentage of college and career readiness we really have before the state also grade and change the cut scores. So this is what it looks like. But this next slide is what it would look like if the old cut scores had changed, because we get the raw scores on all of these students. So if the cut scores had not changed, this is what it would look like. We'd be at 93, 90, I'm sorry, I read the wrong slide. So that's what we would be at. The content changed slightly for reading, it changes more for math, but that's, you know, if the exact same data had been used, that's what it would look like. The next slide is if you took the new cut scores and applied it back to 2011, 2012, 2013. So you can see pretty standard, our achievement hasn't changed, the cut score did. When I show you the next slide, you're going to understand why when I came in, we said we got to do math first on Common Core. This is what it looks like. In reading, we went down 13 percentage points of the aggregate grades three through eight, and math, it's 18 percentage points. And that red bar exceeds, of course, is not where we need it to be. And just in looking at some of the data and those things very early on, a team and we decided we got to do math first, and that's why we are implementing Common Core math first. I did the same type of thing here, if you have the old cut scores and you apply them to the 2013 data, you can see it's pretty constant. This is what it looks like if you apply the new cut scores back to 2011, 12, so you have some semblance of trend data. Do want to point out that the content changed more for math than it did for reading. So this is not a direct apples-to-apples, because there's a lot more emphasis on Common Core and algebra, which we had been working on ahead of it, so we're doing better than some of the other districts that I'm talking about, but it's a little difficult to say it's an absolute trend data. All right, let's go on and look at high school reading. Notice any, now, this is actually same cut scores. Look at the red in 2013. Pretty exciting that we have that change in the reading. You're going to ask me why, and one of the key reasons is that a portion of this test had not been reported out to parents, not to parents, to universities and those kinds of things, so we had some kids that were kind of blowing it off because they've already been accepted into colleges, they've already been those kinds of things. This year, that is applying to what is called a career readiness certificate, so there was a lot more interest for students to do the best that they could on that particular test. We also have implemented some of the Common Core language arts at high school ahead of time. of time, that played some role in this. We also do a lot of work over the summer with a key group of students, especially from low income and ELL that could play into that, but we're all kind of agreeing that the kids took the test a little bit more seriously, at least that portion on reading. This is what it looks like for math. Pretty constant. All right, you got to pay attention to this slide, this is exciting. This slide shows the percentage of our graduating seniors that have at least one, three, or higher on an AP exam. And if you look at the trend data on this, it's impressive. I have other people that call and say, what are you doing District 200? We've received awards for this and yet the trend continues. It's up 17 percentage points if you take that average over those last few years and that's, that's great. What are attributing to this? We've done a lot of work in math on this, we've expanded the number of AP courses that we have at the high schools, we've done a summer bridge program so that some of the students that might be ready for an AP class are taking courses over the summer so that they go into that class more prepared. This is a really impressive piece of data. Now I want to talk a little bit about ACT scores. This is the actual trend data if you back out the students that have that extended time. If you remember at the beginning, I talked about the ACT group of students has changed slightly, where we used to have extended time outs. So I wanted to give you that data and what that would look like. We have about 130 students that that affected, that their scores were not included prior to this and this year they were. This is without though, so you can do the comparison of apples to apples. Okay, then this is some of the predictive testing that we do for eighth grade explore and looking at how are we doing in college and career readiness on what they would predict we'd be able to be at for ACT. This is rather old data because our eighth graders just took this last week, so this is all the way back from fall 2012. And this begins to give us some indicators of where we need to go. Now, we did back out so you could see what that raised, the science test, as I said, the score was changed a little bit. It isn't that we all of a sudden got really great in science. Okay, they changed that test. And also in reading, you see a little bit of a dip there. If you recall what I was saying, they've changed the cut scores for what the reading test would be, so it's now a little bit more difficult than it was. It's not that the achievement has gone down. This is also just looking at it by subject. Again, remember the changes in the cut scores. This graph is what the average new baseline is for ACT. This is with those 130 students that usually had been taken out and you do need to know that usually, not always, but the students that got extra accommodations to have extra time are usually some of the students that struggle on the test. Not always, but usually. It did impact our scores by quite a bit, those 130 students, the scores being back in. If you look at these scores that are up there, it's about six tenths of a percentage point changed from what the others were being. This is what it looks like by subject, so you have a comparison. This is the actual new ACT scores and our percentages of those students that are passing. Okay, this next slide of data you've never seen before, even people that have been on the board a long time because we just got this data on Monday and it is the career readiness data. This is the part of the work piece test that our high school students take that now employers are asking for. If you do not decide to go to college, we'd still like to know that you have basic skills enough to enter the workforce. And there are varying levels of what that looks like, but you do have a lot of businesses that are now asking for this. We had 88% of our students that took this test have that career readiness level. I do not have comparisons yet from other districts, I'm trying to get some calls together, but this data is really, really new. I'm about to leave the data part and start talking about plans. Do you have questions about the data now before I continue? All right. So I already gave this slide, but kind of remind you, we are above state average in all areas, but let's talk about what we need to do. We need to move more students to college and career readiness. You saw those percentages, especially with the new cut scores. We inside the district have seen those for a while and of course, we're not happy or satisfied with those numbers and we need to raise more of those students to be college and career ready. We also need to get really good at things that are not measured on tests. There are a lot of 21st century learning skills, like speaking, for instance, that cannot be measured on a multiple choice test. They can have the greatest skills if they can't get through an interview, we're in trouble. We've got to be able to do that. They need to be critical problem solvers. A lot of times that's hard to measure on a multiple choice test. So those are the things that we need to be doing as well. How are we going to do that? We have to build capacity within this district to improve instruction and that includes building the capacity of our leaders, both of teachers and of principals. We need to provide teachers with a lot of staff development time that's focused on student learning and I'm going to go more in depth on each of these. We've got to implement Common Core standards, integrate technology and then one thing that I am very, very passionate about is we need to create systems of support for teachers. So on the principal part, what are we doing to help develop them? We have a monthly meeting with all of our principals and a great deal of that time we devote to professional development about instructional leadership. I'm also working with the principals to conduct classroom walkthroughs on Common Core implementation. So we have a implementation, hey, these are the things we're looking for, we share it with all the teachers, we're not keeping that a secret. And then helping them go through and help support, identify pockets of greatness that we can have people visit, also identify possible areas that need improvement and how do we address that? We also have student achievement as 25% in principal evaluations. It's very important that we have more than just the principals as leaders. I have a group called the Elementary Reading Framework Coaches and they meet with me as well as other staff. This is not a paid position. They are still reading teachers, but they have a small, an afternoon of an hour or two that they come and meet with me once a month and we created this reading framework and then trained all of the elementary staff on that and now they're back in the buildings having continued discussions, having continued professional development on this. And then grade levels at a time will meet with me after school and we'll train, you know, 100 teachers at a time and then the follow-up comes through the Elementary Reading Framework Coaches and the principals. Last year, we started middle school instructional teams to train a leadership team at a middle school level that represents all the different content and department areas to look at school improvement data and to really identify what those weaknesses are and then work together as a team. And these systems that we're wanting all of these leaders to fit into is so that we can work collectively together and work smarter, not just each individual teacher trying to improve achievement. This year, high school department chairs are going to play a much bigger role in curriculum development and support. I've started meeting with them on how we are going to accomplish the Common Core English Language Arts standards across all content areas. We've said that we're going to start with speaking and listening so that we have common expectations across our high school courses of what public speaking looks like and we're using a similar grading material, a similar expectation, so there's continuity across all of our courses on there. And then we'll be working with writing and reading as well. And then we have high school team facilitators that facilitate each of their PLCs. They've spent some recent time in some training and then they are taking that back during those delayed start times and working with the teams that they represent on all of the learning that we first did with them and then train the trainers, if you will, and then they go back and train teachers. We also brought back Week of Learning this week, this year, can't talk, sorry, and we had over 600 staff that signed up for courses for free to volunteer their time to get professional development in the summertime. This building support of teachers, some people would say that the curriculum job is done when the notebooks are written, the binders are in the hands of the teachers and we're good to go because we've got it done. I believe very strongly that that's not how school improvement and student achievement happens. We have to be out in the schools, observing classrooms, having conversations with teachers, finding out what are their concerns, what are their weaknesses, what do they need professional development in. So we came up with caffeine in curriculum sessions and each of the curriculum coordinators have been assigned to schools and they're going out and having really great conversations with staff about how the implementation of the many curriculum projects and instructional practices are going. I'm also meeting with all the middle school language arts departments. I have my last one tomorrow at 7:15, going in and talking about the reading framework that we've developed there because we have to have good instructional practices in place before we put Common Core standards in. If you have really great standards, but you have poor instructional practices, it's not going to make a difference. So we're having those ongoing conversations and I'll be meeting with each of the math language arts departments three times this year and the principals will be meeting with them in between times. We have a lot of training for the elementary reading framework this year. We are going to be doing a whole leveled assessment program so we know exactly where students are at with their reading level and then providing instruction at that level, whether they're two grade levels above, on, or below. And then we have also created an integrated technology Google site so that that's a link straight from our district website that we're beginning to house some great tech tools that have been proven to really help either with engagement or differentiation and we've got some quick self-help things there for teachers to begin to look at. We are continuing the very important work of professional learning communities and for those of you who haven't heard my broken record, professional learning communities are around four questions where we continually ask the same four questions. What do we want students to be able to learn and do? How do we know if we've gotten there? What are we doing for those students that already mastered it? What do we do for those students that aren't there yet? This is the whole work of the district regardless of the content that we're talking about. And the progress that those PLC teams are making is monitored by principals, also by facilitators, I'm also out having those conversations. And we've really made a lot of strides in those first questions of what do we want students to learn and being common about that. We've got some common assessments and we're spending quite a bit of time now on how do we differentiate instruction. We have students from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade who walk in who already know basically what kindergarten curriculum is or what this is and we still have to have them grow. We also have students that come in fourth grade that are reading at a kindergarten level and we've got to also make them grow. So we have to be able to do all of this. The institute day that is Friday, all of the high school staff will be having a common speaker on this and talking about formative assessment, how to use that data and then both high schools together, again, yes, because it went so well last year, are meeting by departments to have this common work. The middle school staff in the afternoon is gathering in the auditorium to listen to me talking about different instruction, we'll make that get over as quickly as possible. Then we're going to go in, moving into departments, I'll be meeting with math department, various other people will be meeting with the other departments to see how this process is going and really fine tune our skills on differentiating instruction. In the morning, the elementary will be with me and out at different grade levels tackling differentiated instruction, especially in math with our new standards. Common Core with math, we're doing K7, we flipped the switch, we're in progress. We've had over 4,000 parents attend informational meetings on math standards the first two weeks of school. We have new textbooks and manipulatives for K5 and then, did you see the paper? K7 are taking online district assessments. Kindergarteners sat and took online math assessments and we had a few teachers that were like, I don't know how this is going. So we had mouse practice, the kindergartners were great. They had easier time than some of the staff on some of the things we need to do. They've kind of come pre-wired for all of that. One of the great things of being able to do that and have it be online is we had the data immediately, didn't go through it and do it. Julie O was amazing with all the data, was able, she'd come down to like, hey Faith, guess what? We have 622 students and they just took this and here's their average on their score and here, here's the math standard that only 1% of our kids knew. I mean, it was amazing to get that data right away. And then also, when the new tests come for the new Common Core, when PARC arrives, they have to take the tests online. So we've got to have students practicing that because it's a different way of assessment than they're used to.
Just one comment on that, a year ago, two years ago, we couldn't do that. We didn't have the infrastructure to be able to pull that off. So not only the work of the curriculum staff, also, you know, the dedication, you know, you asked about, well, how did some of these payoffs play out? So I'm sorry, I just wanted to jump in there and we couldn't do that before. We didn't have the capacity, didn't have the ability. Now we're able to do it with the wireless and all of the resources that the board has committed, not only in the curriculum side, but also on the IT side. So it drives instruction immediately, as Faith said, which is so important. Sorry, Faith, I just wanted to-
Nope, that's fine, that's fine. And then we also have new elementary report cards in place and that also will be a continued topic of conversation on Friday with the elementary teachers. We're trying to get out front as much as we can and explain to parents. Each principal gave a presentation at their curriculum night on what that would look like, but I'm sure when November comes around and the new report card will come home, we're going to have lots of questions about what that looks like. And we have a new grading system for the math part of it, really getting very specific about these are the third grade math skills that a third grader has to have before they go on to fourth grade and reporting out progress on each of those standards, which is different than what we've done prior to this. Lot more of work for math, we're doing math walkthroughs through all the classrooms today. I finished going through all the middle school math classrooms in the district for walkthroughs and looking at that. I do bring a team, but it's important that I go in too to see all of the math classrooms. We have the half-day trainings that I talked about. We give resources through our curriculum updates, which I think you've gotten a couple of those copies. And then we are beginning work on Common Core geometry, that meeting also starts at 7:15 tomorrow morning. English Language Arts is coming very quickly on what we need to do there. We already have some standards that we've implemented at the high school level where we have complete courses that have already flipped the switch to the Common Core for English and Language Arts. In our district, our writing program has been a little shaky. We needed to work on that. And we've got excellent writing teachers, but it didn't carry forth from second grade to third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade. Everybody was trying to teach their own type of writing and we weren't using the same vocabulary to teach kids. Some people called it elaboration, some people called it support, some people called it details. We didn't have a specific of what that looked like. We now have a writing continuum from kindergarten through eighth grade that uses those same terms and the expectations on what good writing looks like. Then that's going to be shared with our science and our social studies teachers as well so that when we're talking about informational writing, the English teacher isn't seeing something different than the science teacher, they're seeing something different than the social studies teacher and so on. I already talked about the reading assessments for kindergarten through fifth grade and the work on the reading frameworks. We are piloting English Language Arts standards right now in lots of our classrooms. We will be bringing them to you soon for approval and then we have to go through the process again of revising the elementary report card because we'll have all new English and Language Arts standards to put on there as well. This, this content area is a little bit more tricky to do than math because to do it well, it has to affect every single classroom in the district. Everybody has to get that they are teachers of reading, writing, speaking, listening, that includes grammar. Everybody has to understand that. There are specific Common Core standards that are written just for science teachers and just for social studies teachers. That's a shift and we're, that is one of our opportunities for improvement and our challenges in this coming year. and our challenges in this coming year. Also, we really need to get going with the integration of technology. I do have a brand-new staff member, Leigh Cook. She was hired. I do want to point out, though, that that was a budget-neutral decision. We did, when Mary Clifford, our director of grants, retired, we did not replace that. When our director of bilingual left, we brought that down to less than a full-time position. So that's where the monies came for this person. Doing a lot of great work. And she and I are of the same philosophy that you can't have trainings on technology. Y'all come, 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 come on. Anybody who wants to drive across town, and we'll help you with the technology thing. Because the people that show up are the people that could teach the class. The people that are a little, oh, I don't know about this, or they haven't ever seen the possibilities are not going to be the people that come. So she's very, very busy going to schools and presenting at faculty meetings, at science department meetings, at those kinds of things, to show people what's possible, to what their appetite, and then show them where to go. Because there's a lot of great online resources that can teach you how to do this once you understand how it could be used and how it could be beneficial to make you better at what you already do. Already mentioned the new Google website. It's also very critical that we train our principals on this. They cannot be the champions of how are we going to integrate technology if they don't know what's possible, and that they don't understand some of the capabilities of the tools. So at the K-12 meeting, and we started this with our first one in September, we're going to be highlighting and using a tech tool with the principals. And then I usually do a follow-up by sending them an activity that requires them to communicate with me using that new form of technology to make sure that they then feel comfortable enough to support someone else who would use it, or even better, to use it during a faculty meeting or a training with their staff to be able to model its use. I went a little more quickly than I had planned to because I'm at the late hour, but I definitely would entertain questions. My husband likes to joke that I can be Faith Radio 24/7, all school, all the time. So feel free to ask questions about what I presented.
I wanted to quickly answer Jim's question and, you know, comment about this. You heard some of the things they said here, but I want to summarize a couple key points. What can the board do to help us continue on that journey to hit some of these student targets? First, is to support the professional development initiatives or pieces that we will bring forward, you know, whether it's in the curriculum adoptions, whether it would be in professional development with administrators, which I know the board has done here most recently. Huge building capacity of our leadership. You will never see a successful school without a successful leader. It just doesn't happen. And that's very, very important to build that capacity internally. Also develop our bench, and to make sure we're always, you know, thinking about what's happening not only tomorrow but down the road as well. Curriculum changes. We will be bringing, as Faith mentioned, several curriculum changes and materials adoptions as we implement the English Language Arts stuff. Board's going to see that, board has to prove that. It's a statutory responsibility of the board is to look at those, and the board's been very supportive of that, and just ask for that continued support. Because staff is working hard. This isn't just guesswork. We're really diligently going through those resources. Also to reincorporate some of that professional development that was cut four years ago, okay? We probably are going to be bringing some recommendations forward on how to add budget accordingly, how we can, you know, and it probably won't look exactly like it was reduced. You know, we reduced those curriculum leaders at every elementary school and middle school, reading teachers to high school. Well, we might do it a little differently. We might come back with, well, now we're at this point, here's why we want to do this, whatever this may be. It may not be identical to what was in place four years ago. And then finally, a lot of software and web-based solutions. You know, you've seen some of those where we've brought them forward, but those are constantly evolving, and we do just need to stay, you know, as Faith mentioned, we've got to stay current. We have to. One of the Google domains is one of those things that's just evolving before our eyes right now, trying to decide how to use that environment. Now, some of the tools are free, some are marked free. So, you know, we have to make some decisions when we bring those forward for the board for consideration. So yes, specifically, you know, Jim, what can the board do? That's just as I was sitting here thinking, and Faith, you might have thought of a couple of things even since I was talking, but, you know, those are key things that you will be seeing soon on how we can move student achievement forward.
We had talked about the consortium that we've pooled together with the other districts on virtual learning and providing some blended learning opportunities where we're really integrating a lot of tech and some digital learning, but also having FaceTime in various sources with teachers and how we can use staff and budget resources combined by those five districts to be able to do some of this. Since we last talked, I've had a really long meeting with lots of them. We meet again, and we have a pretty aggressive timeline of having some blended learning classes, more than just a few, ready by August, which really puts us at the timeline of being ready to do that by January or February to put them into course catalogs.
Faith, I've heard over the years, so some anecdotal reports about the implementation of differentiated education as a result of PLCs. But again, those are anecdotal. What's your assessment on how this differentiated instruction is going in our classrooms? Because I think it's so important that we try to let those children who are struggling move from the point category to the performing category to eventually maybe the exceed category.
And that is the topic with all middle school staff with me on Friday. We have pockets of greatness, I would say. And it's easier for an elementary teacher to embrace that whole differentiation piece than it is middle and high school. It's a bigger paradigm shift. So we have more, and you saw that from the PLC results where teachers even reported out on themselves on how they were doing, that at the elementary level, you've got all those kindergarten people in, you don't say, okay, we're all going to read a book today. It's kind of like, no, and you understand that. Yet, when I went through school, it was math teachers in middle school. Here's your assignment, hope you all do well on it. And what we're training teachers to look at is you still need that explicit whole group instruction. Here's your learning target that's up on the board. And if you walk through our classrooms, it looks very different than it did last year on the amount of teachers that are writing good learning targets and having that. That's a tangible thing that has changed, that research really says improves just by putting it up there on the board of what you need to do. And then you need to know those students that are already above that learning target, those students that are below that. And differentiation can be just the amount of questions that you ask, and you're thinking about those two kids that already know this. What crazy vocabulary or critical thinking question am I going to have that that child's going to be challenged for at least that snippet of that lesson? And then also for those students that are really, really low, and I think we're making a lot of progress there. There's also the more advanced level of the differentiated instruction where I have three different assignments going by those students that have already proven where they're at, those students that kind of get up with any practice, and I've got a whole lot of students that don't have it yet, and they're getting differentiated homework, differentiated activities with going on in the classroom. Classroom management becomes a much more refined, needed tool if we're not all going to be on the exact same page at the exact same time, and you've got to train kids to be independent enough. We have some teachers that are struggling with that. That's part of what we're going to do on Friday. We have some teachers that are struggling with, well, how does that different? How do I assess all of that and keep that all straight? And that's where the PLC process comes in. Because for me to get up and talk to teachers and say, for every lesson that you do, I want you to have three activities, one for those that are above. In professional learning communities, though, you don't tackle it as I am the teacher. You look at your other second-grade teachers, you look at your other 8th grade science teachers, and you say, this is our group of students. This is what we're trying to teach. Can you come up with something great for the top kids? I'll come up with something that's really great and enrichment activity for the students that aren't good, and somebody else can do this, and we're going to share those materials. And we're going to use a common assessment so that we have a same idea of who those students are that are above, who those students are that are below, and we share that work. And we're in the midst of that, we're not great at that yet. We're still spending a lot of time on it.
Yeah, that's the power of the PLC. Faith just hit the target right on the head. That's the value there. And let me give you an example. I have a very tangible example that I was thinking about here as she was explaining this. I was at Monroe last week in a 7th grade math class. And I was there visiting, you know, I do, I visit the classrooms. I saw three different instructional methods going on in that classroom at Monroe. There was a group of about five kids that were working on the SMARTboard, okay, a piece of technology in the classroom. On a particular target, the learning target was factoring binomials. That's what it was. It was clear, I saw it. And so they were working, because I could tell that group was, needed more explicit instruction, using Faith's term. They were struggling with the concept. On another group that were working independently, she walked over while that group was working on the SMARTboard in the classroom. The other group, she had handed a different, you know, still factoring binomials was a complex. I could tell that was the kids that were above the target on that given day. And then the other group were working independently on the lesson that she had. I walked in about halfway through the class. I know she had introduced a concept, I could tell, because they were working independently on whatever the whole group instruction was, I could tell. And that's what, so that's what I saw going on, that's differentiated instruction. Now, that teacher, that day, was on it. And she had three different levels going on at one time on the same topic, factoring binomials, okay? And so that was just an example I saw last week at Monroe.
One of the other ways that you can really do differentiated instruction that is a little bit easier to do and a lot more aligned with where I think we need to go in having students be independent, is you turn some of the demonstrating of that learning task over to them. Because if they are creating word problems, for example, in math class that show and demonstrate a particular concept, that's at a much higher level than them solving word problems. And it's also, they cannot create word problems past their ability level. And for the most part, few exceptions, students that have a really great ability don't write really simple math questions if they're going to give it to other students. Anytime we can have students write about their learning, it's really hard to write above your level. So if we have students more involved in using technology and, hey, put together a video that shows me that you demonstrate da-da-da-da. Find, use BlendSpace and take four different documents and a video and all kinds of things and demonstrate your proficiency on this particular thing. If they're being creative, even if they're all using the same task, it's differentiated to their interests and to their learning styles and to their ability. So that's another way without thinking, I've got to have three different groups, and it's all crazy, and you wouldn't want to do that every day, every content area. Sometimes that's appropriate.
A couple, just a question. First off, I can attest to the increased difficulty of 3rd grade math. Anecdotal one of this. First, some of the comparisons, I know this is a burden we carry from the state as if we're compared to the state. And, you know, as Jim and I were chatting before the meeting, that's, you know, that's, it's the comparison we get. I don't know how meaningful it is for us in this district. Is there a way not, don't make it a priority right now, but in the future, begin to look at our peers and other school districts we want to compare ourselves to and add to that comparison and add more meaning and relevance to how we're doing?
Right, and actually, there's a really great tool that even a community member can use at any time. It's called Illinois Interactive Report Card, IRC. And you can go on, this current 2013 data is not open to the public that the state gives us some time to talk to our own people and our board and things about that.
Do you want to show them?
Yeah, you can pull it up if you want to. And then you can put in for a variety of variables. You can look at size of district, you can look at socioeconomic of district. For Mr. Farley, you can go and look at pupil per capita spending, you know, all kinds of things. And then look at achievement data. You can pick the districts, you can pick the county, all of those types of things. So I'd be glad to put together, you know, what you wanted, to be able to look at that. This is something that I draw on because it'll also give you scatter plots of every district across the entire state so that you can say, I would like to see every district that has the same percentage of low-income students as we do, or the same percentage of ELL, and it'll show where you are on. Now, this only does state tests. You know, that's the drawback, it's only on state tests. But it does give you all this type of information, and we can easily do that.
I forgot about that.
Well, no.
Yeah, it's all out there.
But this isn't the most current, you know, the-
Well, they embargo it till the end of October, right?
Correct, Halloween.
And we don't have access to the other-
Other schools' data yet, right?
And the other piece of this is be very careful. You've got to control for variables, as Faith mentioned. You have to control for SES, socioeconomic status. You have to control for frame reduced lunch. You have to control for some of those subgroups. Because if you don't, it's apples and oranges, and then you lose that. You can throw five different elementary schools up there and start looking at all that. But you've got to look at all the variables, not just 3rd grade math, because there's a lot of variables. You could look at pre-pupal spending. Some districts spend double what we spent on pre-pupal spending. So, and that, you know, that's a function of the funding mechanism in the state of Illinois. So, you have to look at all of those, and you can do all that on this interactive site.
Could you send out that website to us so we can access it? I can't quite remember.
IIRC.NIU.edu.
Oh, you got it, okay.
We'll send it to you. Through NIU, so yeah, just remember IIRC in front of it.
Send us the link.
We'll send it to you.
Well, it's actually on our website. You can go to the state report cards, they've got our website.
It's on, we'll give it up.
We'll read that.
Mr. Posen, also, before there were state tests way back in the dark ages, when, I think even before I was on the board, we did compare ourselves to our benchmark districts. We always had our benchmark districts. So we were kind of ahead of the curve in terms of looking to see how we were doing and measuring ourselves against other districts. And their benchmarks were the two neighborhoods, Barrington, Tay, the all-unit districts.
Almercy.
Almercy, yeah, and I think that's, I think that's our, it's HR, yes. I need to have a question. I don't know if you could maybe teach us a lesson using some of those Google tools.
Sure.
In some time when, it would just be a good exercise for us to-
I toyed with presenting this in a prezi tonight, but I thought maybe it was a little too serious of a topic to roll out with a prezi. But as a few other presentations, I do want to model some of those things with the board so you can see some of the things that we're doing.
Any other questions?
Well, I just am very excited over the ACT and as well as the AP, AP stuff. That is tremendous. And I like that not only are there more students, but it's not the usual suspects. We keep, we keep using that term tonight, but it's not necessarily the usual suspects. You're going out and working with other kids to help them have that opportunity. And so, very good, keep doing that.
Triangulating data is very, very important, looking at multiple resources.
Sorry, did have one question that I wrote down as you were going through the presentation, and I was just scanning for it right now, but have you decided, or has Dr. Harrison, you decided how you will measure the student achievement? That's going to be 25% of your principal's evaluations, how are you-
Yes, and we actually did this last year too as part of the evaluation. But it is getting a little trickier because usually you would look at trend data. The bar keeps changing on that. Also, what's complicated is we have to have our principal evaluations done by March 1st. So you have to find a tool that will measure student data just from where we get them, August 21st, and have that done, and have it incorporated, and put it into an evaluation by March 1st. Therefore, ISAT, PSAE, you know, all of those types of things are very difficult to use. For some of our existing principals, you can say, well, this is where your school was. But imagine our brand-new three- But imagine our brand-new three elementary principals. You don't want to use last year's data to, you know, those kinds of things. So it's fairly complicated. We are looking at our own district assessments, and those are itemed. They are polled, our math assessments that we've just created are from nationally-normed questions. They're not a nationally-normed test, but they are proven to be aligned with common core and have been used with over 1,000 students to make sure that it wasn't the graphic that caused students difficulty, or if it wasn't the difficult level of the sentence for a math test, for example, those kinds of things. And then we have the pre-test, and then we're forced to have that mid-year test in January, and that's that data that we're looking at on how students are performing, where they were, and how they've grown in those about five months, six months of instruction.
In the next two years, we have to do the same thing with teacher evaluation as well under Paris.
Right.
So, you know, this is a precursor to that, and we'll be working with staff in creating that, those pieces of data as well.
And I probably should have indicated that some districts are going through and saying, "Well, here's the bar, and you had, I don't know, 72% of your students that crossed the bar, and now we want you to be at 78%." Okay. What about the kids that already had mastered it and hadn't gone anywhere? And what about the students that were so low that they're not going to get to that bar, they haven't even learned English yet? Can they grow? So we're using a two-pronged model of looking at that overall growth, but also looking to see that all students within that made growth. Why you can't just do the student growth part is because on the assessment, since it has to be the, you know, the same assessment, you are going to have students that already are at 100%. We're going to have a few students that are so high, like our base students and our gifted students, that it would be hard to show growth when we get to an individual teacher using 25% of that achievement data. So we're really looking at having a two-pronged approach to make sure that not only are our overall students getting better, but looking at individual students as well.
And it's strictly on test scores, not, nothing else right now, nothing?
It has to be on student achievement on data from, that's that 25%. The other 75% of things are looking at best practices, are looking at professional development, looking at those, but 25% of that really needs to be on student test data.
I mean, so, so if we want to measure student achievement in other ways as a district, that can't be used on principal evaluation, is how I'm hearing. Because we talked about measuring a student not only on a test score, but on a number of other things.
When we, for example, in the writing continuum, when we have that in place and we're looking at where students are at for writing, we could very well decide that we're looking at, you know, how many students write a three or a two or a four. You could decide, "We're going to look at speaking," because we're going to have a rubric of what that looks like. So we have a lot of control over what we, what type of assessment data we would use. Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I think you must be reproducing yourself, because I don't know how you can possibly think of all these grades. Oh, I mean, there's just way too much in that job description, and for yours as well. I'm just amazed by how many balls you're juggling here and doing it with such excitement and enthusiasm and being able to chart your growth for yourself as well. I mean, it's just phenomenal. We're very lucky, thank you.
Thanks. It's a new day every hour.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, do we have the lights on? Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Very informative and thorough as always. Thank you very much. The one written report tonight, the IMRF compensation report. Any questions on the written report from board members? Okay, are there any reports from, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious what falls into the other benefits category, because there's pretty substantial numbers. I don't know what those details are.
It's majority of its health insurance benefits is what it is, is that correct, Dr. Ramner? I don't know if there's anything else in there. Majority is health insurance.
It's all, it's all the, all the insurance components, life insurance, life insurance facility, the insurance component, if there is any compensation for paid-out sick leave or vacation time, that would also be in that, but predominant amount is health insurance.
Yeah, and that would only be for individuals that left the district, so I don't know if it's correct.
Correct. And that chart reflects last year's figures. It's not current, it's last year's figure, because we don't know what this year's figures are.
And that complies with the law, as you saw in the report. All right, are there any reports from board members? We've heard from finance, we've heard from community engagement, facilities, I think, is yet to meet.
That's right. That's common knowledge.
And learning and teaching, you've heard a lot about learning and teaching tonight. We did meet, and I think we did mention that we, you know, reviewed the status on a lot of things, and we also were aware that we will be evaluating the cut list, so to speak. So that's where we are in terms of teaching and learning. We don't feel that we're going to be...
The only other thing was, will we bring the intergovernmental agreement forward for the virtual learning?
For the virtual learning, yeah.
And the board will be saying that that's what that cooperation would give to the districts. You did take a look at that.
Yes, we did, yes.
Just one comment on that topic, the close group by community engagement. That was a, that issue of online learning was something that we interjected or injected into the conversation in that other district, and I was amazed at the amount of excitement from parents and community members in that district over that issue, top three issue. And more integrity on this.
And also, you will be asked to approve a policy on virtual learning that we'll need to give to you for the policy manual as well. So that's, that's going to be coming down the pipe probably in the October 9th meeting. So be aware that that's coming. Are there any other questions? Okay, then our next regular meeting will be October 9th at Johnson Elementary School. And are there any public comments? Okay. And then agenda items? None, so then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and I'll ask, please, that board members stay around to sign the budget document that has to go to the state. So we need everybody to sign it, so if you will stay around to the meeting, just do that quickly, I appreciate it. Go by Mr. Madison.
Senator.
Seconded by Mr. Swanson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And please vote on that.
I'm on, I'm on, I'm on one.
Let's not delay this any longer. Everyone, if you want to leave, put your hand up.
Everybody does need to sign this document we have to submit to the state.